Good morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brettafeld.
Yeah.
Capriolio.
I am here.
Chavez.
Here.
Olivier.
Here.
Brandal. And Council President Soria.
Here. Next, we have the invocation by Reverend Reagan Baker of the Big Red Church of Fresno. If you want to come on up. So if I can ask everyone to please stand and remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity to be here. Let us be gathered in a spirit of prayer. Dear holy and loving God, we thank you this morning for your abundant blessings and provision. We thank you for the gift of life and its renewal with each sacred breath that we take. We thank you for the communities and city in which we live and the unique diversity that enriches it. We thank you also for challenging and meaningful work, in particular, the work of governing this city on behalf of its people. To be given such work is a high task and a unique grace. Today, we pray for each other, for everyone engaged in this work, and in particular, this council. Today, we seek from you wisdom for governing amidst competing interests and complex issues, a commitment to justice and equality for all, a mindfulness of those in our communities who struggle to secure our basic needs of food and water, clothing and shelter, and the ability to disagree with respect and to build more together than we can alone. We pray for today's agenda. Please guide this council's work and decisions to bring about an increasingly just and flourishing Fresno and ultimately world. From many perspectives and traditions, we pray these things together. Amen.
The United States of America and its republic for which it stands, one nation, one home, individual equal.
City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there's a few changes. We have two add-on ceremonial. One is a proclamation for Women Equality Day by Council President Soria, and also recognition for George Lopez, also Councilmember Soria. And the only other change is Item 5A, which is a closed-session item regarding security of City Hall and other city facilities, has been continued to August 23, 2018.
Great, thank you. Do any council members have any changes to the agenda? CNN, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? CNN motion carries 7-0. Now, we'll go on to the consent calendar. Would any council member like to pull an item for discussion? Great. Would any member of the public like to speak on the consent calendar? If so, you can come up to the podium at this time and introduce yourself, your name, and you would have three minutes.
Motion to approve.
So there is a motion by Councilmember Capriolio and a second by Councilmember Chavez. And is there any opposition? CNN, motion carries 7-0. Now, we're gonna go to the ceremonial presentations, and we will be leading off with the presentation of the SPCA Pet of the Month by Councilmember Chavez.
Morning. I knew I was gonna get the light-colored furry little puppy when I wore a dark suit today. So I have the honor of presenting the SPCA Pet of the Month. This little buddy here has... Well, we'll let Talia give a little quick overview of... Oh, my God, he's licking me. He really wants me to take you home, don't you?
Hi. Good morning. So this is my little buddy, Sugar. He is two months old. He's a dachshund or Winnie-Dog mix. And we are here to promote his adoption, just like many others there. He does have a brother at the shelter, so if you're interested. This Saturday is our open house, so we invite the community, personally invite our council members to be present. It's gonna be from 10 to 4, so we'll have an adoption special. We'll be doing tours of our barn, of our whole shelter, and it's just the day for people to come and get to know the SPCA and the awesome work that we do and all the animals that we really wanna save. So again, it's clear the shelter. There'll be an adoption special, so if you've been thinking about giving them a home, this is a great time to do so.
And Talia, if somebody is watching at home, all three people, what number can they call?
Yes, please give us a call at 233-S-P-C-A. That's our line. And then if you have questions, I can certainly answer them for you, so dial extension 125 so I can help you quickly. Yeah, the adoption fee on our dogs are between $120 to $180, depending on their age and how long they've been there. But on Saturday, we're gonna have a roulette. So you spin the wheel, whatever discounted it says on there, then that's a discount off of the $180, potentially even a free adoption. So you could potentially win a free adoption, yeah.
Right on. Thank you very much. So if anybody wants a cute little puppy, Sugar is available. Thank you. Thank you, Talia. So now, we actually have... And I know you all weren't here for the Puppy of the Month. I know you're all here for Mike. Mike Rhodes Day. So Mike, if you wanna please come on up. So I got a couple of texts and calls last night from some of my younger advocate friends, and they asked me, "How do I get my own day at the City of Fresno?" And I said, "That's very, very easy. You just gotta contribute 30 years of service to the City of Fresno, and you're set." And I asked them, "How many years do you have in there?" They're like, "I got like four or five." These are millennials, right? Like, they call me the elder millennial. And so I told them, "30 years, and you're set. Give me a call when it's 30 years, and we'll get you a day." So I wanna give a little background on how, you know, we ended up selecting Mike and giving him his special day. So part of being a policymaker is that you have to admit, and this will come as a shock to some of you, that sometimes you don't have the answers to a lot of the city's problems. And we know that Mike's expertise has been in really advocating for folks that don't have a voice in our community, particularly the homeless issue, the Islam lord issue, who's really been at the forefront of that and doing a lot of work. And, you know, Mike, you've been here at City Hall as in the audience. You've been in the offices. You've been outside at 1:00 in the morning, sometimes getting arrested. I think you're the only advocate that's actually sued the city and are about to get your own day. But we just wanted to say thank you for the long decades of service to our community and our city. And you know that the family, because it runs in the family, is so committed to Fresno that they named their grandson Fresno. Aren't you lucky you weren't born in Clovis? I'm kidding. Don't send hate mail to people from Clovis. So before we read the proclamation and let Mike say a few words, we put, we conspired with Simone and the family to do a little slideshow for Mike. So Brianna, if you could play that for us, please? So Mike, thank you for the work that you've done for really being my unofficial advisor at your satellite office at the Review Cafe and for all the advice. I think, you know, one of the biggest challenges that the city is facing is the homelessness issue. And we know that previous councils have tried to tackle this and previous mayors, and we've come up short. But I know that you brought a humanistic approach to this problem. And oftentimes, as policymakers, we tend to see that through the lens of infraction, punishment. But there's much more to this challenge that we have. And I think there are gonna be some initiatives coming forward by this cohort of council members and the mayor. And I think folks in the advocate community will be quite happy with some of the solutions coming up. But we wanna let you say a few words and present your proclamation. So I know you have an event to plug into.
Great. Thank you, Louise. And thank you, everybody on the City Council for this award. I don't know what to say. One of the few times. So, you know, part of my family came to Fresno from Oklahoma, so the Dust Bowl era. And that was one of the pictures you saw up there. I really like that picture because it captures that moment, sort of the Grapes of Wrath period of the Central Valley. And the other side of my family came here in the 1890, 1892 from England and settled as farmers in the area. So we have a long history. I'm fourth generation. My grandson here is sixth generation. And maybe Fresno and Simone and Pam, if you could come and join me up here, we could have the whole family together. I'm just so proud of my family, both, you know, here and those who preceded us. And we have tried to make Fresno a better place and worked hard. Oh, my mom is here, too. I didn't see you. My mom is at the end here. Hi, Mom. Yeah. If it wasn't for her, I would not be here. And there's also another thing I wanna let you know about. And that is that we're gonna have a benefit concert on Sunday at Fulton 55, starting at 7:00 PM. It's 6:00 PM, thank you. And it'll include several groups, the High Desert Ramblers, the Richie Blue Band, Roger Perry, Glenn Delpit, and Steve Ono. And what this is about is that one of the tools we've used in our toolbox is the legal one. And this is a fundraiser for a scholarship fund that is being set up in my honor that will help legal students who are going to the San Joaquin College of Law and give them a grant so that they could continue. And these will be people that wanna work on free speech issues, helping disenfranchised groups like the homeless, working on social and economic justice issues. So it's a benefit for that cause. I hope you can all come. I would love seeing you there. That's what I got.
Thank you, Mike. And Daniel might wanna take advantage of that. He's a law student right now at San Joaquin College of Law. So Clerk, if we could read the proclamation?
It is great distinction and pride that we join in honoring and congratulating you for all of your civic involvement, dedication, and commitment to the City of Fresno. Our city gratefully acknowledges your many notable achievements throughout your lifetime of advocating for the city policies. As the founder, editor, and journalist for the Community Alliance newspaper, you provided a voice to many who did not have one. And in your book, Dispatches from the War Zone, you advocated for real and humanitarian-based solution to the city's homelessness issue. We appreciate all that you have contributed over the years. As a lifelong Fresnoan, you have truly shown your dedication and commitment to improving quality of life for everyone in our community. It is people like you who truly make Fresno an all-American city. Thank you and congratulations. We wish you the best in all your future endeavors. On behalf of the City of Fresno, we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the City Fresno Council do hereby proclaim Thursday, August 16, 2018, to be Mike Rhodes Day in the City of Fresno.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you to the family. We have no illusions. I don't think any of my colleagues that you're gonna stop beating us up because we gave you an award, but that's why we're giving you an award. Thank you.
Mike, I just wanted to also congratulate you. I think that this is a great recognition on behalf of the City of Fresno. And it is, I think, great timing in terms of acknowledging your work, your work as a journalist, specifically when we, you know, are going through times where journalism is being attacked and where journalism actually is extremely important to our community to speaking the truth. And so thank you for all the years of work that you have given to the City of Fresno and really giving to the people, because that's what you are about, and that's what you've been about in your fight. Thank you so much. Councilmember Olivier?
Thank you, Council President Mike. I wanted to... You and I first met when I was a reporter and on the street, and you were obviously reporting on the street. And we were able to find some common ground. And I think that what differentiates you from a lot of your colleagues from your side of the political spectrum is that Mike understands libertarians. And Mike understands where I'm coming from. Mike and I have worked together. We join with one another in our opposition to unjust foreign wars. We join with one another in fighting for civil liberties here at home. And libertarians, for folks on the left, are not your enemy. And we shouldn't be written off as people who are not helpful to what you are trying to achieve, which is peace and justice. And I know Dan, and I see Dan and Camille, we've worked together as well on this topic. We're not harmful to the things that you're trying to do. We share the same goals. And Mike, of all people, you've always been the one to call and reach out to me. And I know somewhere you go, "Oh, you know what? Clint can be helpful. Clint will be our ally. Clint will be helpful." And I thank you for that. I thank you. Because when others have written me off because of some of my fiscally conservative policies and the things that I advance here on the council, you never wrote me off. And for folks that don't know Mike, this is the kind of individual that he is. It's said that he brings people together, and he does. And so I wanted to thank you for doing the Community Alliance. I wanna thank you for your journalism. I wanna thank you for building a big tent. I wanna thank you for looking for ways to reach out to people who may not necessarily agree with you on everything, but for example, on the new STEM prohibition. That was the most recent thing that we just worked on. And something like that was critical. So thank you for being fair. Thank you for being understanding. Thank you for understanding that the mission of achieving peace on our streets and also the streets overseas, thank you for understanding that the mission of achieving civil liberties and protecting civil liberties from an ever-encroaching state here at home, thank you for realizing that those things are more important than petty political differences. Thank you for being the person you are, and you deserve your proclamation. Congratulations.
Great, thank you. So we will continue on with two special presentations. The first one will be for the Women's Equality Day, and I will be presenting that. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Today, it is my pleasure to acknowledge not only the phenomenal women that are next to me, but also remind everyone that August is a very important month where we do celebrate Women's Equality Day. For those of you that don't know, we celebrate Women's Equality Day because it was in this month that the women back in 1920 garnered the right to vote. So we're only two years shy away from being able to celebrate 100 years of really a victory that came from the hard work of women, but also of men that supported this cause. And so I wanna recognize... Here we have Claudia, Marcia, Pat, Kathy, and Janet. And so I know that they are part of a phenomenal organization called National Women's Political Caucus. It's a nonpartisan organization that has been fighting and really working hard to support the issue of women equality, not only on the day-to-day, but also on the front of political in terms of making sure that women are supported to get to elected office. And so we have a lot of work to do, even though today we do almost celebrate 100 years. We still need more women elected. We still need more women in the STEM field. And we need women in those fields that have traditionally been held predominantly men. And so I just wanna be able to recognize all the hard work that these ladies have been doing and committed to do to ensure that people like me get to serve, that other women on the other governing boards, like our trustee, Carol Mills, is able to represent and have a voice, not only for our kids, but also bring a different perspective to those tables. So I wanna thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, President Soria. I'm the president this year of the National Women's Political Caucus of Fresno. We have been around for over 40 years. And yes, we are a multi-partisan organization whose goal is to have 50% of women in elected and appointed positions by 2020. We're working on it. President Soria and Carol Mills, they've both been our endorsed candidates. And we thank you so much for this recognition to all of the council members, but especially to our president. Thank you.
Great. So if we could have the clerk, if you could read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas nearly one century ago, dedicated women marched, advocated, and organized for the right to cast a vote and finally saw their efforts rewarded through the 19th Amendment. And whereas today, we celebrate the anniversary of this achievement and pay tribute to the trailblazers who fought for equality for women. And whereas at every level of society, we see women serving as leaders and shattering glass ceilings. And whereas there are still women fighting for fundamental rights such as equal pay for equal work and access to health care locally, statewide, and at the federal level. And whereas the National Women's Political Caucus in Fresno is multicultural, intergenerational, and multi-issue grassroots organization dedicated to increasing women's participation in the political process. And whereas this day, they will host the 2018 Women's Equality Day Dinner to celebrate the accomplishments of all who have fought and continue to fight for women's equality. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby recognize August 26, 2018 as Women Equality Day in the City of Fresno.
So they do have an event tonight. What time is the event? 5:30 at Torino's. So next, I have the pleasure of doing another... This is a very also special recognition. I'll call up George Lopez. He's been a staff person in my office, a part of our team. He started as a Maddy intern in 2017? Yes. So he's been with us for over a year. He started as an intern, and then right after we hired him as part-time staff, he is a student at Fresno State. But we are sad to report that he's gonna be leaving shortly. He has done a tremendous amount of work for our team, for the residents, from constituent work to event planning to doing the certificates of recognition, which are very, very important for our community. And so I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that you've done. You're an outstanding young man. We know that you are gonna be going to bigger and better things. And that's what this is about, you know, the internship opportunities that we provide in our office and really the mentorship of the young people that come through. We wish you much success and just wanna thank you for all the work that you did during your time here with our office.
Thank you, Council President Soria. I just wanna thank a couple people. Itty Robles, she really got me into this whole politics thing back in 2015 with the Walking Rainbow campaign. Terry, who gave me a chance and let me come on as part-time staff. And it's Marelda for believing in me and giving me opportunities to go out there with the community and serve the constituency. I had a great time here. It was probably one of the best shots I've ever had. Thank you.
So we're presenting him with a certificate of recognition. On behalf of the City of Fresno, I extend my gratitude to you for your work and dedication to the constituents in District 1. All of us here at the City of Fresno are very fortunate to have had you as part of our team. Thank you again for your hard work, and best wishes with everything that you do.
The Council President, you said... You said that he's on to bigger and better? What could be better than the Fresno City Council? Really? This is about as good as it gets, right?
Perfect. So we'll go on to the next thing on our agenda. It's the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes of August 9?
No changes.
Perfect. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio and second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none. Motion carries 7-0. Now, we'll go on to council member reports and comments. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you very much. First, I wanted to address National Night Out. That was last week. We had it at our Eldorado neighborhood. And it was a fantastic event. I think we were the only district in the city that honored the National Night Out. So I wanted to thank those that were involved and helped us out. So I wanna thank Fresno State ASI, Fresno PD, Fresno Fire, Fresno State PD, Wesley Church, Fresno State Greek Organizations. District Attorney Smith Kemp showed up, and it was great to see her, as well as Chief Dyer, Deputy Chief Farmer... Dyer, Deputy Chief Farmer, and especially all the residents that showed up and came out to meet and interact with each other and take advantage of the numerous booths that we had up for that celebration. But I wanted to especially thank my Chief of Staff Laura Rios and my staff in general. They were there at 6:30 in the morning making all this happen. So, it was a great event, and I want to thank all those for helping me and the residents of District 4 celebrate that National Night Out event. And next, a great moment, as you know, the crown jewel of District 4 is Fresno State. Another reason why I feel that way is I want to congratulate Dr. Castro, his faculty, staff, and students. They were named one of the best, of the 100 best universities in the country by Money Magazine. They actually ranked 66th overall and 41st. This is the national event. This is something that every university wants to be involved with and would love to make the top 100, and Fresno State did it. So, they were 41st among public colleges based on affordability, educational quality, alumni success. And myself and other members up here are proud alumnus of Fresno State University. So, congratulations to Dr. Castro. I wanted to thank Chief Dyer and his team, as well as the city administration, for getting the bike unit up and running in District 4, and more particularly, in the Eldorado neighborhood. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting that. You guys were fantastic to let that happen, and we've taken advantage of it, and we get nothing but great reviews from our residents. This is going back to what we've all wanted in advocated community policing. And I wanted to thank Detective Kim, the actual officers who ride those bikes. It's key in getting the police into the neighborhoods and communicating and relating to the residents. And those residents feel stronger about the community. They feel like they have a trusting relationship with the police department, and it only makes things bigger and better for the entire community of Fresno, but especially Fresno State. So, thank you. Thank you, thank you for that. And I had one last comment with Assistant City Manager. We had been discussing that Route 20 situation, and I was going to ask you if there's a way to pursue or at least discuss the Route 20 situation on Shaw Avenue that would be between Cedar and Chestnut, which is basically in front of the St. Mart Center.
Certainly, yes. I believe that I could have staff work with you about that particular area.
I appreciate that, and perhaps we can go down Cedar Avenue from Bullard to Ashland as well. So, I appreciate you working with me on that, and we can address that sometime later. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Great, thank you, and welcome back physically, because I know that you were working still.
I know you guys jammed that mic up, so you couldn't understand my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Brandow.
Yeah, Council President, I would just like to close today's council meeting in memory of my friend and a great Fresnoan named Marcus Lester. Marcus is a guy that I got to know only once I became a council member. He has a ministry in the City of Fresno that reaches young people, and his goal is, and he takes trips to universities and college campuses, usually on the West Coast. And his goal is to lift the eyes of young people to see different places and opportunities that they have. And he strives to get people, young people, to advance themselves in as many ways as possible. So, unfortunately, last Thursday while we were in council, he passed away, and so, I would just like to close today. He was a good friend. I'd introduced him to a couple of you. I'd introduced him to the mayor, and he'd had a, he would do things like have a spaghetti feed and send all the proceeds to help kids get to school. So, I appreciated knowing him. I'm very thankful for our friendship and like to close today's meeting in his honor.
Great, we will do that. The screen is clear. I just have a couple announcements. On Wednesday, the 14th, or yesterday, we had Fatty's Pizza Grand Opening. They've been open for a little bit, but there are a pizza shop that is out in the Central Coast, Pismo, and so, we had a couple open up a franchise here on Shaw, West Shaw, and so, that's exciting to be able to support another new local business. Also, just wanted to report that a couple weeks ago, about a week and a half ago, we had a Residential and Business Energy Program Resource Fair where we invited residents and business owners to explore no-cost or low-cost resources to help their homes and businesses become more energy-efficient, which we all know, that's even something that the City of Fresno is trying to do in order to lower some of our costs. So, we will be posting additional resources on our website so that folks can access those resources that are very good for everyone to explore. The last thing that I want to just highlight, my council colleague, Councilmember Brandow, joined me on Thursday, August 9, where we had the Highway City Community Center Groundbreaking. This has been a project that that community has been working for over a decade, and it was very exciting to be there, to see the ground break, because it is going to bring a much-needed community resource center to that area. And then, once it's all, it is all built out, we're also going to see the first public county library west of the 99, which, if we look at west of the 99, we have close to 70,000 people and have no access to a full traditional public library. The services have been operating out of Teague Elementary, very limited. So, we're very excited because we're going to be able to provide library services in the years to come, and after-school programming, provide health resources. If we look at the amenities west of the 99, they're far and few, and so, we're very excited for this project west of the 99 in the Highway City area. And want to recognize the Highway City Community Development Corporation for their hard work on this project. So, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. We'll go to General Administration. So, we can start with 3A Workshop Regarding Recycled Water Project Updates by Public Utilities.
Good morning, Mike Herbahal, Department of Public Utilities. So, today, we've got two recycled water-related items on the agenda. Brief workshop to update you on recycled water projects and future planning initiatives, followed by resolution to increase our state revolving fund low-interest loan for the Southwest recycled water projects. So, jumping into the workshop, we'll take a look at the various policy decisions that impact, impact water sustainability decisions, making, you know, related to, sorry about that, let me start. Taking a look at the various policy decisions that impact water sustainability decisions. We have the National and the California Environmental Quality Acts. We have the 1973 Endangered Species Act, and we also have the 1980s Public Trust Doctrine. More recently, we have the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, as well as the long-term water use efficiency measures that were just approved this year. All of these things together are drivers related to decision-making for recycled water. You combine that with Fresno's installation of residential water meters, the severe five-year drought, and the greater awareness towards water conservation, and it's important to note that there have been very significant changes that have occurred during the past decade since the original recycled water planning efforts were completed. So, taking a look at the DPU major projects, we utilize this map quite a bit to kind of show where those projects are taking place. Today's presentation will center on the Purple Distribution System in the southwest portion of the city. Looking at the various types of recycled water projects, in terms of production, we've got the Fresno Clovis Regional Water Reclamation Facility, tertiary treatment disinfection facility. It's a big, long name. That's a facility that produces about 5 million gallons a day out in southwest Fresno. In addition to that, we operate the North Fresno Water Reclamation Facility and produces a little less than a million gallons a day. In terms of distribution, we are currently expanding the 10- to 54-inch diameter pipelines southwest. Those pipelines will convey recycled water from the treatment plant to our recycled water users. In terms of our users, you may have seen this purple sign in and around Roding Park, and that's because over the last month or so, we have delivered over 12 million gallons of recycled water to the Roding Park. In addition, we are looking at pushing water to the various freeways. We've got coordination meetings with Caltrans to work with them to maximize their use of recycled water to beautify the state right-of-way. We have an agriculture user who is currently taking water. We have other agriculture users who are interested, and we are working closely with a couple different cemeteries to get them connected and permitted by the state very soon. We are also working with the state to talk about permitting regulations for residential water use of recycled water. In terms of commercial and industrial use, Community Regional Medical Center, as we move into the downtown area, is interested in utilizing the water for cooling purposes. And as the recycled water regulations continue to evolve, we will move towards utilizing groundwater for aquifer recharge, and we're starting to hear about regulations being amended that will allow for surface water to be augmented with recycled water supplies. Looking at our fiscal year 2019 CIP planned expenditures, specifically water and wastewater, we have programmed about $162 million worth of expenditures this year. About a quarter of that, or 39 million, is related to recycled water treatment and conveyance, and more specifically, about 34 million supports build out of the southwest distribution system. Now, that funding is contingent upon an increase of about $18 million in our Clean Water State Revolving Fund Low Interest Loan. That's 1% financing for 30 years. Current estimates based upon the planning level for that work indicate that we do need to increase that loan to build out the project. So, that item will follow this presentation, and we can talk more about that at that time. Drilling into the southwest system, you can see the dash lines on the screen represent those pipeline segments that have been completed to date and are operational. So, the Cornelia Avenue alignment, as well as Belmont Avenue, are the pipelines that support the deliveries to Roding Park. The green segment, right in the middle of the map, labeled SW1C2, that segment is wrapping up construction at this time and will be operational within the next couple months. Now, going forward, the blue segment labeled SW4, the right side of the map, that's a segment that allows us to cross the Highway 99 alignment, as well as high-speed rail. We will push recycled water into the downtown area, supports connections to Fulton Street, as well as Community Regional Medical Center, and as well as additional connection to the Caltrans right-of-way. The additional segments on the screen support future expansion or continued expansion in the southwest area, as well as potential expansion towards northwest Fresno. Now, our planning and implementation timeline, just a brief history on that. We completed the construction of the North Fresno Water Reclamation Facility around 2010. In parallel with that, we completed the initial recycled water master plan. That supported the development of the Metropolitan Water Resource Management Plan, and that's also the information that is utilized to update our urban water management plan as required by the state every five years. The tertiary treatment disinfection system, as well as the southwest distribution system design, kicked off right around 2011, and we are currently in that construction phase for southwest that will run up to 2020. The initial recycled water deliveries commenced last year as the disinfection system came online in 2017. We currently have ongoing feasibility planning for expansion recycled water going forward, and we'd like to utilize that information to prepare an update and a comprehensive recycled water master plan that will confirm our recycled water projects and that will be implemented on a going-forward basis. So, the ongoing planning for future recycled water projects currently includes northeast, northwest user analysis. So, since we put in our residential water meters, we have very detailed information. We're able to analyze that, and that supports distribution system planning. We've also conducted some utilization planning for the north water recycled, the north water reclamation facility. The water from that plant that's currently produced has supported the Copper River Ranch Golf Course, and so, we're looking at additional opportunities in how we can best utilize those supplies. Going forward, projects, expansion projects include going from 5 million gallons a day to 15 million gallons a day at the regional facility tertiary treatment plant. Also, looking at satellite tertiary treatment facilities located in other portions of the city allow us to pull water off the collection system, treat it, and then make recycled water available in those more local areas. All of this information would then be utilized to support the update to the recycled water master plan, confirm our strategy and projects going forward. So, just rolling all of this up and to summarize, you know, a lot has changed since the preparation of the initial master plan. We've constructed quite a few recycled water facilities. We're still going to continue to build those out. We went through the five-year, very significant drought. In terms of conservation, installed residential water meters. All of these have changed our supply and demand characteristics. We've got the new regulations that are being implemented with Sustainable Groundwater Management Act and the long-term water use efficiency measures. All of these have impacted the drivers and decision-making for recycled water, and our plan and recommendation is to move forward with a comprehensive recycled water master plan this fiscal year to consider current conditions and drivers that serve as a basis for smart, appropriate, justifiable capital spending decisions, which will balance cost as well as community benefit. So, that concludes the presentation. Be available for any questions.
Just wanted to ask, Mike, in terms of the cost, does that, using recycled water, what's, I guess, the benefit? How would someone see this as, is there an incentive to use recycled water?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the regulations are going that way. They are driving us to reduce our potable water demand, as well as to reduce our groundwater pumping, and recycled water is a very important component of being able to do that. And so, the new regulations force us to look at these types of projects, and as those regulations evolve, you know, we're seeing agencies that, you know, in addition to purple pipe systems, they are looking at aquifer recharge. We have some of those abilities as well. And the regulations will continue to move towards being able to take recycled water, treat it to certain levels that will augment surface water supplies. Potentially, you can run that back through your surface water plant.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
Mike, quick question. On the third slide, you kind of see the map of the purple pipe as it goes out. Is that what we have so far, or is that what's in the works?
So, if we look at this map here, I think this is, you know, a blow-up of the southwest distribution system. And so, what's completed to date are the dash lines, so the purple line along Cornelia Avenue, the light blue line that's labeled SW1B along Belmont Avenue, and SW1C, which takes us over to Roding Park. That's completed, you know, the construction's complete. Those pipelines are operational. They are delivering recycled water to customers, including Roding Park. 1C2 is a green line that is just finalizing construction, and we expect to put that into operation within the next two months or so.
Here's why I'm asking. So, I know that part of our cost of operating our parks is, I understand that we figure that cost, the cost of watering, the landscaped area, is that correct?
Yes.
So, with that, and with the savings, what would be the price difference between what we're using now with potable water and what we would be using with recycled water?
So, right now, we are delivering recycled water at no charge. So, we're trying to get the system up and running. We're trying to incentivize connection. Some of that requires improvements on the property in order for the state to permit that site to receive the water. So, similar to Roding Park, there were some improvements that were needed there, including all the signage and as well as some training for the individuals running the system. So, that is a regulated system once that water goes onto the property. That's why we're not charging for it. Going forward, I would recommend as we develop the master plan, we update that, that a component of that is to support, you know, a rate for recycled water. I think across the state, on average, we're seeing agencies that are charging around 75% of their potable water rate, so that's a 25% discount to potable water.
So, 70, so about 70, 75 cents on the dollar for...
As compared to potable water. Right, and so, you know, we would develop something specific for Fresno, considering where we're at and how we're moving forward with implementing that across the city.
Sure. And where I was going with this too, I know that we have a number of parks... And where I was going with this too, I know that we have a number of parks across the city, right? We have median islands that we water, but school districts have these huge playground areas, and I think, I think there's a lot of opportunity and some partnerships, particularly with Fresno Unified that operates about 108 sites across the city. Have we had any conversations with them with regards to maybe some cost sharing or a partnership in that endeavor?
Yeah, we are talking to the schools. We have outlets on the distribution system that facilitate connection to schools and parks in the vicinity of the Southwest system. So yeah, those communications continue to happen. We're looking forward to coordination with Caltrans as well. They have certain drivers of their own, driven at the state level, that will require them to utilize the water, and so they may be able to partner with us, build pipeline within their right-of-ways that will further expand the use of recycled water. So we're definitely looking at all those opportunities. The purpose of the master plan, updating that, is to better, make better informed decisions about where we spend that next dollar. You know, these facilities are, do require a significant investment of our ratepayers, and considering the changing landscape of regulations, conservation, that sort of thing, we want to make sure that, you know, the spending balances those community benefits, be it parks, schools, with, you know, how we can achieve our sustainability goals as well.
And how far into those conversations are we with those potential partners, school districts, Caltrans?
So with the school districts, yeah, we have coordinated and have specific outlets that will support those connections, and as those pipelines are constructed and come online, then we can work with them to get their property ready to receive water. Caltrans, we have a meeting on the schedule with them, and we will continue to go down and explore those opportunities with them. So that's coming up within the next couple of weeks to start having more detailed conversations. We've got, we have certain services that are coming online right now that Caltrans could utilize, and then with SW4 coming into the downtown area, reaching all the way up here to Divisadero and 41, we'd like to confirm their strategies to use recycled water and make sure that we have appropriately planned and sized our facilities to support their needs.
And last question, I know that the difference between potable water and recycled water, there were some questions, maybe you could clarify. The recycled water is not drinkable, but it's, so the testing involved with that, would, just kind of briefly talk about what testing goes through to make sure that it's safe even with skin contact and all that?
Yeah, it goes through a very rigorous disinfection process, and even, so the quality of the water is very good, but it's not permitted for potable water purposes, and so what we're seeing is the regulations starting to change so that you can use it for indirect potable reuse. That means we could take that water and we can put it into a recharge pond, allow it to perk back into the ground, and then pump it back out as potable water, as well as augmenting surface water supplies that may feed a surface water treatment facility, such as the one we're constructing out in southeast Fresno right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you. Congratulations. Your team is doing a great job.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that. And I think the other thing that we need to be aware of, which you mentioned earlier, was that we have big brother and big sister in Sacramento, and they keep throwing down rules and regulations that directly impact us, and I, quite frankly, I feel will hurt us and our tax-paying citizens who are paying for the Southwest Water Treatment Facility and others by imposing their strategy on us when we have our own very effective strategy, thanks to you and Tommy Esquera and your team. So I want to congratulate you on that, and I think by this type of effort, we will be ahead of the curve with Sacramento, and hopefully they'll have very little impact on us.
Yeah, that's definitely a goal. We want to, you know, take a look at what's happened over the last 10 years. The planning effort that went into the facilities we're building today happened about a decade ago. Landscape has changed quite a bit, and so we want to roll that, all of that up in a comprehensive plan that's going to drive the decision-making, the funding analysis, and identify those projects that are going to support this city going forward.
Great job again, and congratulations on your directorship, and look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Great, thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Capriolio, for mentioning that. Congratulations, Mike, on your recent appointment to becoming the Director of DPU.
Thank you.
Proud of you.
Much appreciated.
Perfect. We'll go on to Item 3B, which is a resolution to revise reimbursement resolution number 2014-205 to increase Clean Water State Revolving Fund low-interest loan funding for the City of Fresno's recycle water distribution system.
So as I mentioned during the workshop, we have a revised reimbursement resolution on the agenda. An approval of the revised reimbursement resolution number 2014-205 will increase the Clean Water State Revolving Fund low-interest loan from $52,475,049 to $70,600,000 that will support build out of the Southwest recycled water distribution system. This is 1%. This is a 1% 30-year loan. It covers the design, the construction, construction management of the Southwest recycled water projects, efforts to segment the pipelines into separate, smaller construction contracts. We've kind of gone through a realignment phase to reduce construction risk, maximize user connections while reducing the amount of pipe that we build, additional environmental documentation, as well as standardizing our pipeline construction. So in terms of our potable water pipelines, our recycled water pipelines, standardizing the pipeline corrosion control, the backfill materials, all of these things together have, you know, increased the cost to complete that Southwest distribution system. We've worked the State Water Resource Control Board, completed the necessary financial review. They support the increase to the loan, and that will allow us to build out the distribution system as was planned, as we showed on the screen. What's needed at this step is to approve the reimbursement resolution that commits to repaying those loans. So it's a very good investment for the city in terms of, you know, 1% financing, it's an existing loan, and the state is supportive of completing the program as originally planned.
Great. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? CNN will bring it back to the dais, Councilmember Brendo.
Yeah, Mike, so just in my understanding, we were applying for a loan for X amount of dollars, and we've now found that we need to make that application for more money. Is that, is that simply what's happened?
Yeah, so the application that you're talking about, that occurred back somewhere around 2013. The reimbursement resolution, I think, was approved around 2014, and at that time...
That was the $52 million?
Yeah, at that time, the, that application was made and approved for $52 million. Since then, we learned a lot more about building large diameter pipeline. We've got a lot of pipeline in our system, over 1,800 miles prior to the Recharge Fresno projects, these recycled water projects. Not a lot of very large diameter welded steel pipes in the system, so that's evolved during that time. We've consolidated our water and wastewater CIP programs and staff. We've standardized these two programs together in how we build the pipelines. And as we've worked through all that, we recognize that in order to build out the Southwest system, we're looking at about a $70 million expenditure. And that's where we worked with the state over the last year, update them, and work with them to complete the necessary financial reviews. That's all completed. They're supportive, and so we're now asking to increase the loan by 18 million, which will take it up to $70 million.
And then what would be, so, and it's a 1% loan, what will be the end result cost to the City of Fresno for this additional $18 million at 1%?
What's the additional cost?
Yeah.
I don't have the number off the top of my head in terms of, you're talking about over 30 years, in terms of debt service repayment, what's the impact? So yeah, I mean, it's, you know, these are, these are large numbers. You know, I don't know specifically what the number is, but I can tell you that at 1% financing, you know, there is a huge savings to building these types of projects. If we, if we don't move forward with that today, our options are limited to utilizing cash, you know, our available cash pay-go capital, you know, and I'd say at that point, we'd have to prioritize the segments which are back on the, that were on the map that remain to be completed, you know, in terms of building into downtown, expanding towards northwest, or building pipelines to support residential development in the Southwest.
No, I get that, so I'm just trying to understand. You don't know how much additional cost this is to the city to repay the extra $18 million we're going to apply for at 1%. Jane, do you know the answer to that by any chance?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but the budget for the Water Division has been constructed so that the debt service can be covered by the existing rate that we have, and so we would not present anything to you that would not qualify for that, and we would ensure that any debt service payment would be covered by the rate, but I don't have that number right off the top of my head, no.
Okay, okay. Well, you're actually headed to my next question, which was, this will not cause any ratepayer increase, this going for more money in this loan will not cause...
This particular loan, no, it will not.
Okay, that was my next question. All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Great, we have a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? CNN motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Great, so we're going to go ahead to scheduled items. The 10:00 AM hearing, which is a hearing actions pertaining to a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fresno, establishing underground utility district number FRE96, Public Works.
Good morning, Councilman Jim Pauls Grove with Public Works. Proposed underground utility district FRE96 is generally located along Church Avenue between Walnut and Martin Luther King Boulevard, Walnut Avenue between Church Avenue and Grove, and Martin Luther King between Church Avenue and Grove Avenue. Staff is requesting the adoption of FRE96 so that overhead utilities can be undergrounded along this roadway in conjunction with the city's street improvement projects surrounding the planned Martin Luther King Activity Center. Underground installation of Pacific Gas and Electric overhead electrical facilities is funded by utility company funds set aside pursuant to California Public Utilities Commission Rule 20A. PG&E's cost to underground existing overhead facilities within FRE96 is estimated to be $4 million. Other utility companies such as AT&amp;T and Comcast will provide 100% of the funding to underground their existing facilities. Staff recommends council adopt the resolution establishing underground utility district FRE96. I'll be available for any answered questions.
Great, thank you. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? CNN will bring it back to the dais. The screen is clear. Councilmember Baines?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Baines, a second by Councilmember Brendo. Oh, Capriolio, sorry. Any opposition? CNN motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Olivier absent. Next, I'm going to switch it up a little bit. I'm going to go to the 1005 number three, which is a workshop relating to procurement before I do the 1005 number two, number one and number two.
Good morning, Council President. Council.
My name is Todd Knittle, Purchasing Manager, Finance Department. Did you want to go through the entire presentation, or do you have specific questions?
I think we'd, I personally would like to go through the presentation. I think that we've had a conversation, and we had to kind of cut this short in a previous council meeting, so I'd like to see the entire presentation.
Okay, well, Brandon, you want to start out?
I think it's a great way for also the public to understand the city's procurement process and showing, you know, the transparency in the process of it. Thank you.
So if we take a look at the purpose of the workshop, we're going to cover certain items here, and so the legal portion of this is I'm going to cover the city's municipal code, the city's charter, and AOs that are applicable to the city's authority related to procurement. Also, areas that the purchasing division will cover are piggyback and cooperative contracts, requirements contracts, sole source contracts, competitive bidding, RFPs and RFQs, and consultant contracts. And so just a brief overview of some, a legal portion of contracting are the elements of contracting, and there are four of them. The first element is the authority to contract, and that directly comes from the municipal code or the charter, and also some administrative orders where council or the administration has set policies. So specifically for material supplies, equipment, and public work of improvement, the charter is a source of the city's purchasing authority, and that comes from Charter Section 1208. And we also have some specific provisions relating to purchasing in the municipal code at 4-107. So services procurement, so this involves anything that is a non-professional service. And so what we have here are janitorial contracts, we have banking contracts, things of that nature, things where typically where the entity is just providing a service or not providing an opinion where we are going to base a decision on later. And next, we have the professional services procurement, and that is anything where we are hiring a consultant, and typically we are looking for an opinion from that consultant where council or the administration can base a policy decision on. And that can be found at Administrative Order 6-19, and that includes specific requirements of how consultants are selected, the process that must be gone through in order to conduct an RFP or an RFQ. And we also have a non-professional services procurement. We have an AO on point as well, which kind of sets those same standards for non-professional services, and that can be found at Administrative Order 6-28. Any questions?
How is the non-professional services procurement different from the services procurement? What's the distinction there?
It's different because there are, the government code has certain requirements when we are procuring professional services. So when we procure professional services, we are required to do what is called a qualitative based selection, which basically means we must look at the qualifications of the consultant or the professional and base the decision off that. So for a non-professional services procurement, we don't have those same standards. The city has a lot of flexibility in the way it wants to structure how that is selected. It can enact certain rules to the municipal code or administrative orders or policies and decide how the city is going to select those potential service providers.
Can you name an example of a non-professional service?
Sure.
Contract that we may have?
Sure, that would be, our most recent one would be our custodial contract that we awarded. That would be a non-professional service, and so in that case, they're just performing a service, they're just cleaning various locations, city hall, or other sites that we have. And so in that case, for example, the city is not limited to picking the service provider that offers the lowest price. The city has a lot of flexibility, it can base on previous performance, it could choose that, it could choose the service provider based on other considerations. For example, it could take, it could take a look at if it wanted to target small businesses, for example, or if it wanted to target micro businesses or disadvantaged businesses in any way. The city has a way there to spend its money in a way in which other considerations can be taken. Generally, we see those like more ethical considerations, or, I'm trying to think, anything else. Generally, I think that would be it, but there are also maybe other options available for select... available for selecting those types of businesses when we're looking at non-professional services. The city is gonna have the most latitude in those areas, and so the city council has a lot of, a lot of leeway and can make whatever policy it chooses in those areas, and so that's, the city has a lot of discretion in those areas.
Brandon?
Yes.
Would a, the banking contract be an example of that also?
Yes, the banking contract is a service contract.
Non-professional?
Correct, a non-professional services contract.
And council recall that that is largely why we're doing this, when the banking contract came up, both the process for doing that, and then the overlay of the ethical issues and how we deal with that, and I would invite council as we're doing this, if you wanna weigh in as far as giving direction to change a policy or come back with something, feel free to do that too, 'cause I think that's part of the reason we're here.
That is correct, there's also a part of this presentation at the very end where we're gonna be asking for direction from council on how it wants to decide that, that we take in consideration those ethical issues that may arise in services procurement. And so if we take a look at the, the next contracting element, that involves the competitive process, and so when we're dealing with competitive process, we're typically talking about some sort of competitive bidding, and that's related to material, supplies, equipment, public work of improvement, that type of thing, and also may deal with RFPs, RFQs, and, and that's typically your, your type of competitive process, what's gonna be run in that area. And in cer, in certain instances with certain types of procurement, council does have some discretion to say which types of procurement they want to see for certain types of contracts. And so appropriation, that's a budgetary function, that's the appropriate money appropriated for that particular contract, and then we have a legal review, so every contract must go through the city attorney's office unless the, the agreement has been standardized, which basically means the city attorney's office has pre-approved that contract. And so another thing I wanna highlight also is that the city attorney's office does have a contract compliance program, where any contract that is over a, that is over one year in duration is looked at in our office, and we look at potential escalators that may arise, where the city is owed an increased fee, for example, or a way for us to monitor insurance, or essentially it adds an extra layer of review, and then so what's, the city attorney's office is then able to do is then send staff an update of saying, hey, there's a potential escalator that we have coming up for another year, we can increase this contract amount by three percent, or the insurance is going to expire, so we need to make sure we update insurance to kind of keep everything current, to make sure the city's kind of monitoring everything and doing what we should be doing. And so that is a big function of contract compliance, just to, just for city attorney staff to make sure that we are keeping up with contract deadlines. And so, and also another issue, important issue related to procurement is the regulated communication ordinance, and so generally it's referred to as a no-contact rule, and the theory behind this is that we are trying to keep vendors, service providers, contractors, whoever, from contacting local officials, because what we do is, we, we want the local officials to not be influenced by any of the persons who have contracts coming before council. And so we try and make sure that these, that these businesses communicate with the appropriate staff, we also in some ways try to keep them from communicating with the administration, so essentially, we want them to keep communicating with purchasing staff, so purchasing staff is, that way they have all the, they can ask any questions they want, and that way we kind of give them one-point person instead of talking to multiple pieces, multiple, I'm sorry, multiple people within the city. And this applies to both competitive bids, so any construction project, material purchase, supplies purchase, and also reply, applies to RFQs and RFPs. So our entire process, we try and keep those potential bidders or proposers just contacting one department, and we try and keep council out of that decision until the contract comes before council. That way, that way the idea is that council has an objective position, and they can look at the contract as a whole without being influenced by outside parties. Potentially, if the bidders or proposers violate the ordinance, then they could be, staff could recommend that they not be awarded the contract, so they could be found non-responsive for failure to follow the ordinance. So that is a, a risk that any bidder proposer would have to take if they chose to speak with a council member, then they are, they must acknowledge that they are potentially ineligible for the contract. And so what the regulated communication ordinance provides is that when there is a communication with an elected official, that typically that must be disclosed in twenty-four hours in writing, and that's typically a requirement imposed on the council members or elected officials. And that is my portion of the, of the presentation, I will now go to staff.
Good morning, Laura Rapp, I am a Senior Procurement Specialist in Purchasing, and I'd like to talk to you about the piggybacks and the cooperatives. Our piggyback or cooperative contracts are contracts that are established by an entity that agencies like ourselves utilize. They offer many goods and services, materials, supplies that we utilize, and we do so because it offers us either really great volume pricing, and in addition to that, an opportunity to quickly procure what we need if we have time constraints in order to get what we need. A good example is the restroom at Cary Park, this was a project that we bid out several times, and there were issues with either not receiving bids or having to reject all bids, and so we moved on and we used a piggyback in order to get that project complete. We procured a restroom, a prefab restroom on that project, and we already had a contractor in place to install for that, so that allowed us to solve that problem.
So can, can you go into a little detail on what the piggyback is and why it's not considered a competitive bid or what have you?
The piggybacks are, the piggybacks or cooperatives are, they're an exception to our charter, and, and again, it's established by an outside agency or agencies, there are several, there's NJPA, there's CMAS, WISCA, there's many different agencies that offer these types of piggybacks or cooperatives, and those are for education and government entities to utilize. And again, it's based on, they have an extensive list of products, supplies, materials, and sometimes services that allow us to take advantage of volume pricing. Does that answer your question?
Counsel on piggybacking, you know, the state law and local codes require competitive process, piggyback just means another government entity has already done it, so we can just use their process to ensure that it's been fair and there aren't sweetheart deals and that sort of thing, that's the goal.
And so in a situation like that, the main issue would be the procurement practices of the other government entity?
Yes.
Or government-like entity?
Just to ensure that a competitive process occurred.
Right. So that actually, there, there has been a competitive process, someone else executed it, executes it on our behalf?
Essentially, yes.
Right.
We're borrowing their process.
Right, okay.
And part of the purchasing process is to make sure that we vet that contract that we're using each time to make sure that it was competitively bid, there's a process that it goes through in purchasing to make sure that it does satisfy a lot of the requirements that we normally typically go through as per our charter.
Councilmember Chavez.
So just on, on that point, so the piggyback process is another, another organization, another entity went through that process, we're piggybacking off there, what if there's a discrepancy between what their process is and what our process is?
Generally, most processes for government agencies are the same, so you're gonna have some slight variations, but what our charter would require, as long as the original purchase was awarded to the lowest responsive or responsible bidder, typically, we would be able to award the contract under that piggyback. So if there was a situation where their process didn't line up with ours, then we wouldn't be able to utilize that piggyback.
Who scrutinizes that, does our, does our city attorney or does professional staff look at that?
It is the staff, the purchasing staff that looks into that issue to make sure that it is compliant with our charter.
Do they make, do they make, do they forward that to the city attorney if there is a discrepancy, do they make that judgment call themselves?
City staff makes that judgment call, that is typically not forwarded to the city attorney's office. If there's a question related to the legality of it, then they would forward that, that legal question to us, and whether we had a recommendation as to whether that process was applicable, however, in, in my five years here, I have not seen that question.
Here's where I'm a little, I have a little angst with that, so coming from President Unified, I'm very familiar with all kinds of contracts, piggybacks too, we used to use them all the time for classroom desks, overhead projectors, things of that sort, I know that there were instances where that school district's process did not mirror what ours were, and so we, we used a different method in that situation, but what I'm hearing now is that that's completely up to, up to staff to make that judgment call, then they would forward that to the city attorney's office, so I think that needs a little bit more clarification. I know it's a policy decision and discussion, but I'm trying to get input from what direction we give.
Well, it's both policy and legal, typically where you see piggybacking is buying personal property, the desks, cars, those kinds of things that are more or less fungible, people use the same thing, not so much for public work of improvement, that's where our ti, our process has to be the tightest, is the public work of improvement under the charter, but buying motorcycles, cars, desks, paper goods, those kinds of things, that's typically where we see piggyback, and that's where the processes among government entities are gonna be fairly uniform.
Okay, thank you.
And just one question on that, is there any limits in terms of the expense of the contract, the, the cost of, you know, the amount of the contract, or the discretion is unlimited?
There, no, there is a threshold, absolutely.
What is, what is that threshold?
For, when we're buying products and services, it, for products, it's over, anything over a hundred and thirty-five thousand currently, will have to go to council for approval, and you'll see a lot of those on your agenda. So anything under that is at the discretion of the purchasing manager?
Well, let, let me clarify, there are two different issues, one is competitive process, the other is contracting authority, yes, for purchasing goods over a hundred and thirty-five thousand, yes, they ask to go to council, but you can still use piggybacking either way.
And, and, and when we use the piggyback process, although we're in essence borrow, borrowing another entity's procurement practice, it does not remove any of our discretion, does it? Do we still, we as a city ultimately have the final say on what contractors, what vendors, or what have you, or do, or do we, or do we secede that to the entity that we're using the piggyback for?
We have a choice in the product that we're trying to use, we go through that process of vetting their process, what they've already chosen, we will utilize whatever, whoever the contract is awarded to is who we're utilizing, but from there, we have a very stringent vetting process within purchasing to make sure that it meets charter, and as Brandon mentioned, we would come to the city attorney's office to make sure if we had any questions about utilizing it, whether or not it was okay, then we would absolutely confer with them.
You can go on, thank you.
Requirements contracts? These are repetitive purchases that any one of our departments or divisions would like to make, we put these in place so that they can make repetitive purchases. These are generally one-year contracts with two one-year extensions, sometimes more, as you saw with the RFP for banking services, I believe that was a five-year contract. It depends on the product, or I'm sorry, it depends on the, the service that we're buying, how, how many years we put it in place, and if it's something extensive like the RFP for banking services, it's typically a longer period of time. The point for having a requirements contract is not only that it's multiple purchases for, it's repetitive purchases for something, but we're trying to lock down a price, so it's a, a better deal for the city rather than going out each time. Requirements contracts can be something that's competitively bid, like, you know, anything that's based on low bidder, and it can also be an RFP, which is based on best value, as you saw the RFP for banking services, and it can be a piggyback, which we just spoke about. For example, our Staples citywide office supply, that happens to be a requirements contract, that of course we utilize those office supplies every day throughout all the departments in the city, and it also happens to be a piggyback. So it can be both, we're locking that down, we're vetting that entire process, it came to council for approval at some point, and we're putting that into place for multiple years in order for all of our departments to use.
I'm glad Laura had piggybacks. Sole source. We refer to sole source or single source, it's utilized when a product is specialized and vendors are limited. Departments must provide justification to procurement, why they wanna go sole source, we'll vet that, and oftentimes, we will search the internet and determine whether or not there actually is another vendor that's selling this particular product. Many sole source, single source scenarios are a, a result of city business decisions, so an example which I'll get to in a couple seconds again is Cummings engine parts, our, our fleet has Cummings engines, so when we purchase parts, we're trying to standardize, Cummings sells Cummings engine parts, so generally speaking, we have to go to them. If procurement approves a sole source, the originating department needs to create a sole source memo that goes to city manager's office, and city manager will prove that or not, and then it comes back to us and we can move forward with allowing the bid package to go to council. As mentioned, an example would be Cummings engine parts, Fax utilizes Cummings gas engines and factory parts are only sold by Cummings, and it's by territory, so there's some aftermarket parts for Cummings, but oftentimes, that entails us having to modify the actual engine, and then that gets into another situation in which there's a cost. Competitive bids. It's our city charter, Section twelve oh eight. Informal bids are, we just raised from one thirty-five to one thirty-eight thousand, formal bids are over one thirty-eight, we use the CPI, Consumer Price Index, to adjust that on a yearly basis. Charter requires competitive bidding for goods and public works of improvement over a hundred and thirty-eight, so all formal bids, as mentioned previously, are awarded by council. Request for quotation may be used for products under the formal bid limit, we typically require three quotes from any given department, and typically, we treat that as a, a bid in which, a formal bid in which we would take the lowest price for our best value. It, there are circumstances where we wouldn't potentially take the lowest bid, and that would be due to maybe lead time issues or delivery cost or something like that. Local preference typically applies to competitive bids unless funding sources prohibit the preference, any federally funded programs will not allow local preference. We'll look at how much we're spending on local preference at the end of this presentation. All right, RFPs, that stands for request for proposal, they're used as a procurement tool for professional and non-professional services, Brandon kind of touched on that, it's a solicitation for services where the award is based on specific criteria, it's not awarded based on price alone, a, a lot of the RFPs that come to council are, are vendors that are higher than the lowest bid, but again, staff is looking at best value for the city. An RFP cannot be used for public works, as Brandon had mentioned, public work contracts must be awarded to lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Design builds may use an RFP. For the RFP process, there's a committee that evaluates best value, so typically- best value. So typically, there could be between three and five committee members. Um, they will have received all the bids in, and they will vet, uh, procurement will be involved to facilitate the meeting and take notes that eventually council will see. Um, again, the goal in the RFP process is to choose the best value for the city and not necessarily the lowest cost. An example, uh, Grizzly's concession air service. Um, we try to, as far as the committee goes, we try to get a committee member, um, from outside the, definitely outside the owning department and somebody outside the city. So there's less bias. Um, that way, when it comes to the committee, there's somebody from the outside that's actually looking at it from, we believe would be a more objective stance.
How do you guys select those individuals?
Um, we rely on the owning department to select the committee, and then it comes through procurement, and we vet who it is that they're choosing. And if there isn't somebody from outside the city, we will suggest or ask why this wasn't particularly taking place. But generally speaking, yes, there is somebody from outside the city, and especially somebody outside the owning department.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, RFQs, uh, request for qualification, when do we use them? RFQ is also used to solicit qualifications, but unlike the RFP, it does not include the cost. Um, the request for quote also gives the city the opportunity to select the most qualified firm. Uh, an RFQ allows the city to have more flexibility and may allow the proposers to use their expertise to, uh, complete or develop the scope of work. Opposed to an RFQ, which typically has a fully developed scope, I'm sorry, an RFP typically has a fully developed scope. RFQ, um, we're, we're looking for the most qualified. So, uh, oftentimes, um, we will wait to hear back from the particular people that are responding, the proposers, to, uh, potentially modify our, our requirements. Um, an example would be consulting services for five-year rate plan for DPU. Um, Public Works utilizes, uh, RFQs most often. Um, they want to ensure that they have the most qualified, uh, prior to looking at their pricing. Uh, and I think it was mentioned earlier, um, the selection of architects and engineers is qualification-based, so we always use RFQs for, uh, architects and engineers prior to even seeing the cost. Exceptions to the RFP and RFQ process, uh, emergency or exigent circumstances. Um, it could be something pressing or demanding. And the service provider is uniquely qualified. I think you've seen a lot of that uniquely qualified language in the last six or eight months. Um, a service provider with unique skills, experience, fitness, and other factors enabling it to perform the proposed services. Um, a uniquely qualified proposer isn't necessarily sole source. They just, um, have a good understanding of exactly what it is that needs to be taking place, and they're qualified, um, potentially more qualified than other service providers. An example would be the police department body cameras and tasers. Um, there were other vendors that sold those particular units. So it wasn't a sole source, but PD had field-tested specific cameras out in the field and the tasers, and the, the vendor offered the best value for the city at the time. Um, but obviously, PD was taking into consideration, uh, officer and citizen safety. Um, a side note, whenever staff believes that somebody's uniquely qualified, we generally have them create a memo. And that could go through city attorney or city manager's office. Okay, um, kind of touched on it a little bit, but logistics behind the RFPs and RFQs. Uh, procurement facilitates the process from beginning to end. Um, departments provide purchasing with the list of the committee members. Um, the members evaluate the criteria, including the ability to meet stated service requirements, costs, past performance, and experience based on references. Um, when, when the committee is actually choosing a proposer, um, we have a, a, a rating sheet, basically. And if there's anything in the proposal that the proposer shall or must, we're having the committee members rate that. So we're trying to vet them as much as we can and, and determine, uh, fully whether or not they're the best value for the city. On average, from development of the RFP to council, uh, about a hundred and twenty days, it, it varies, uh, depending on the complexity of the RFP or RFQ. Um, we've, we've sped that up a lot. Uh, it, it just takes more communication with staff, but, um, we've been involved in some pretty long RFPs. Um, during the, the committee process, uh, again, procurement facilitates. So if staff wants to bring in some of the proposers to meet in person, to clarify, then we can do that as well. That takes place often. Consulting contracts, um, Brandon covered this a lot, but, uh, council delegates authority to city manager to enter into all contracts for all services, fifty thousand and under. Service contracts over fifty must be approved by council. Any material amendments to a consultant contract, cause, uh, excuse me, which causes the contract to exceed fifty thousand, or it already exceeds fifty thousand, uh, must be approved by council. An example would be the personnel recruitment for department director position. You're all familiar with that. Um, consultant contracts, we gave a presentation for the city, um, maybe about six months ago or so, but those are handled at the department level and may either be an RFQ or RFP. Um, procurement gets involved with consultant contracts to answer any questions that staff may have, and we've assisted, especially if it's coming out of our department. Um, as mentioned earlier, we wanted to look at the city expenditures, um, for, uh, non-local and local vendors. Mike? Mike Lima will talk about this slide.
Good morning, counsel. Mike Lima, Finance Director, City of Fresno. Uh, it's been a concern voiced by this council and previous councils to make sure that money that is spent by the city gets to vendors and businesses that operate within city limits and also within what's called the local preference area. The local preference area is just a reminder, it is Fresno County or a twenty-five mile cir, uh, radius from City Hall, which for practical purposes means we pick up the city of Madera. Um, and so we've looked at the numbers, and that's what's in front of you on this slide. The first line shows total voucher payments issued. Um, so this is all the payments made for pens and pencils, PG&E, consultants. It's all wrapped up in this line. So this is how much we've spent on outside businesses in each of these fiscal years. And as you see below that, it's broken down into, um, non-local and then also within the local preference area. And as you see, we've spent, over the last three years, we've spent about, somewhere between sixty and seventy percent of our dollars are going to vendors within the local preference area. Um, that can be broken down a little further. How much are going to specifically City of Fresno? You could see we've averaged just under fifty percent has gone to businesses within the city limits, and about eighteen, nineteen percent has gone to businesses that are outside the city limits but still within the local preference area. Again, there are factors that you have to consider. We will never get to a hundred percent here at the local preference area for a couple of reasons. First, there are some products that are not manufactured or sold here in Fresno. Best example, fire engines. No one here builds them. No one here sells them. We have to go outside of town to buy them. The other thing, as mentioned earlier, if any of these purchases are made with federal or state dollars, those funding sources specifically prohibit local preference being used as a factor in the decision-making process. So if we are using those dollar sources, we're going, we are going to have to go with the other rules that are in place for our procurement. And that may mean that we do not select a local vendor because we're going ba, based on the most, um, based on price as well as the most responsive and responsible bidder. But I bring these numbers up only to show you that we are dedicating a lot of dollars to our local businesses. We are pumping a lot of money into our economy. And I think that this is an indication that the local preference ordinance as designed is working here at the City of Fresno. Is there room for some improvement? Yes, perhaps. But it is working. The majority of our money is going to local businesses in this community. With that, I will turn it over, I believe, to the city attorney's office for final comments.
So the last slide we have here is, uh, ethical considerations in, uh, in contracts. And so, um, probably the easiest place to implement these ethical considerations is going to be in non-professional services contracts, which I had mentioned previously. Um, if, if there were interests in other areas inclu, including, uh, materials, supplies, equipment, public work of improvement, that would be a little bit more difficult to do. However, we could discuss those options if you like. Um, however, but for the, uh, for the most simple, a place to start would be for the non-professional, um, services contracts. And so what we are inviting with this slide is for council to, um, provide some direction on the policy it wishes to see moving forward, um, with these ethical considerations. And then so, um, if you have any additional questions, please let me know. But, um, like I said, we are looking for policy, um, advice from you. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was a great presentation in terms of the information for all the council members to know in terms of our procurement process. We appreciate, um, the time that you guys spent in sharing that. And I think most certainly, um, this council will, if it sees fit, will bring some policy recommendations, um, as we move forward for future contracts. Thank you.
Thank you.
So before I go to the next scheduled, um, workshop, I'm gonna go to scheduled communication, which is a ten, ten-ten a.m. We have an appearance by Timothy Nolt, is he here, to discuss the Air Bed and Breakfast in the City of Fresno. You can state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes. Thank you.
Repeat my name, anything else?
State your name and your address for the record. You will have three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Nolt. I live at eighty-five oh seven North Akron in Fresno, California. Uh, I purchased my home in a residential, single-family neighborhood, which means no business, no businesses are allowed in the neighborhood. A couple of months ago, a neighborhood home was converted to an AR-B and B. I didn't know what AR-B and B meant. What it means is a air bed and breakfast. It is a large company. According to the AIR-B and B, the home will handle up to ten tenants. I have seen a lot more than ten people at the home. It appears a host does not live at the home. Groups of strangers are coming and going night and day. Lots of cars parked on the street. I researched A-B and Bs and found out they are referred to as de facto hotels. In other words, a business in residential neighborhoods. Other cities have major legal problems with Airbnb type of rentals, and now these cities are developing codes to control the Airbnbs or eliminating them. Airbnbs are violating the sanctity of Fresno's residential neighborhoods. Residential neighborhoods are zoned so that the residents can feel safe and have a safe place to raise their families. When people see how much money Airbnbs can make, there will be a rush to convert more Fresno home into Airbnbs. This will drive rents up and intensify the housing shortage. In the midst of a statewide housing crisis, we need to take reasonable steps to protect Fresno homes from conversion into de facto hotels. To stop this unplanned intrusion of Airbnbs in Fresno and before big problems occur, you need to hold public forums to discuss the issues and develop reasonable, common sense codes. The easiest solution would be to require residential rental contracts to be thirty days or more. In communities that allowed Airbnbs to grow haphazardly, the working middle class are being forced out of their homes, and apartments are forced to pay higher rents or move. In reality, the short-term rental economy is benefiting very few at the expense of many. Um, my question to you, are the mayor and city council members going to develop some common sense codes and guidelines for Airbnbs like Clovis did, or require residential contracts to be thirty days or more? At your convenience, or within ten business days, I would like to receive an answer to my question from the mayor and the city council. The mayor's not here. Okay. Uh, in reality, the short-term rental economy, again, it, it only helps a few people. It, it hurts many. Uh, right now, the Airbnbs are getting a free ride to the riches by overloading our public services, police, firemen, and schools. The reason I think you should probably act now is because the Airbnbs do not have an expensive incha, infrastructure to support. They're very litigious, and they don't hesitate to go after the big cities like they did at Los Angeles, Santa Monica, and San Francisco.
Thank you, Mr. Nolt. We appreciate your remarks. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? You referenced Clovis. What does Clovis do again?
Say that again.
You referenced Clovis.
Clovis, they set up a plan for the air, AR-B and Bs. In fact, I have copies of it, uh, back there. And, uh, most cities have sat them up, and they still have troubles with Airbnb. What I found out from my research is that Airbnb officials go in and ingratiate themselves to a community, get things going the way they wanted. And then when they want to expand out, they, uh, call in the lawyers.
Okay.
So I mean, they take on big cities.
Sir, can we get a copy of that? Do you mind, do you mind giving our clerk a, a copy of what that information you have about Clovis?
Oh, about Clovis?
Yeah.
Okay.
Their ordinance or statute, whatever they have, that might help us.
I'll go back and get it for you then.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Is there anything else? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nolt.
Thank you.
Next is Mary Esther Correa here. Great. Okay, so that is for our ten-ten scheduled communication. We'll go back to the ten-oh-five a.m., um, hearing or workshop number one, um, pertaining to the citywide replacement of high-pressure sodium streetlight fixtures with more energy-efficient light emitting diode fixtures, Public Works.
All right. Good morning, council president and council members. I'm Scott Moser, Public Works Director. And if we can have the city clerk, the PowerPoint slides up. And if, uh, this is an item, uh, a topic that's been, uh, before the council previously. A workshop was requested, uh, to, uh, discuss some of the matters, uh, in greater detail. What I'd like to do, um, is not cover every slide, but, uh, focus in on some of the topics. Uh, but the information is available in case the council has questions and we want to dig in further. So, uh, just again, a brief overview. Um, there were some questions about our, uh, streetlight inventory and count. Uh, we do have approximately forty-three thousand, of course, varying wattage. We've talked before about, um, our annual energy bill of three-point-two million dollars, and there's a great opportunity for savings there. Uh, these are all, uh, un-metered, uh, streetlights. So in other words, the power bill, it's a flat rate. So what's really key is for savings is to get those into lower wattage categories. And those rates are all set by the CPUC. Um, as far as LED, uh, we did change our standards a few years ago, and we have, uh, a growing number of LED streetlights in new neighborhoods and with capital projects that the city undertakes. So, uh, going So going forward, why, why now? Why move forward and not before? Number one, significant return on investment of under seven years. And at the end of that time, we wind up with pure savings that can go into, again, this is gas tax savings, not general fund, but even with gas tax, street repaving, concrete sidewalk repairs, numerous things that we know, working with your offices, are very important to the community. Also, I do want to highlight again, the state constitutional and streets and highways code restrictions on gas tax usage. No matter how you slice it, and we've worked a lot with the state controller's office through audits and such, any kind of loan repayment, whether you call it bond debt, you call it a loan, you call it a lease, any type of loan repayment that's not pay-as-you-go is strictly prohibited by the state of California for our gas tax usage. So the key for us, and what's highlighted here, is that the budget, the council's approved for this fiscal year, has a funding swap wherein we utilize Measure C flexible revenues for the loan repayment, and the gas tax continues to pay the energy bill. So at the end of the day, total bottom line dollars, it's net sum zero. This is not something we could have done in previous years. Just due to the city's financial situation, the ability to take on more debt and pledge and get involved with Measure C flexible was simply not there. And so, again, that's not something that was moved forward on in years past. But now, thankfully, is an option. Again, just going to focus on some of the slides here. One that we've added from previous discussion, we wanted to talk about the common features of the project of the citywide LED light retrofit regardless of how we would deliver that. One is that in the city, we already have a complete GIS database of all of our lights. Every location, pole type, is it a wooden pole, steel, what have you, what wattage it is, you know, the, the actual type. So we have all that in place. But anyone doing that work would, of course, verify to be sure. That's something, of course, that's already been done by PG&E in these recent months. Also, I want to be sure to communicate to the council, again, regardless of how we move forward, there will be a neighborhood-by-neighborhood design prior to any construction, prior to any lights being installed. A great example of how we've done that before and how we'll continue to do that is the Eldorado Park neighborhood, also Yokomi, where, and out by Fresno State, some areas where we've undertaken LED lighting retrofits. And we look at each light with, again, with our designer to be sure we have the right fixture, the right pattern, the right level of illumination, along with looking at them with our police department to see if there are certain neighborhoods where, in fact, increased lighting levels are appropriate.
On that note there, I want to thank you and your staff for lighting up Eldorado Neighborhood as well as the around Fresno State. I've gotten so many good reports from the university, from students, from neighbors, from residents about the effectiveness of your, our pilot project, and your helping us out there. Those locations in District Four. So my hat's off to you, sir, and thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. Again, also, another element is trying to maintain similar lighting coverage. Of course, LED lighting is brighter, cleaner, much better, not the yellowish color of the high-pressure sodium, but a cleaner light. We always get great feedback with those. But at the same time, generally trying to keep the same lighting pattern. We'll have a slide where we go through that a little bit. Also, in general, as, as we've been talking about maximizing the energy savings, but also taking the opportunity to increase illumination in some areas when we make the change. Also, a common feature is really, since we're designing neighborhood-by-neighborhood, getting the right level of lighting, there's really a common energy savings on the bill regardless of which way we go. We've talked about savings being in, in the gas tax, not the general fund. And also, something that the adopted budget does is it takes any maintenance savings from our staff not having to go out and change lights that are failing and going into major repairs. We have several hundred lights that simply have no power. Those are underground wire faults or major electrical issues that are not, not up in the fixture. And one last common feature is a one-year warranty on workmanship. Do you want to highlight the PG&E master services agreement? That's the action item that will follow. It does already include a one-year warranty on workmanship, similar as we have on all our public contracts, and then the 10-year on the lights. Of course, council, in the slide, talked about just recent history. We did first conduct a workshop in May and have had the chance to discuss the item with you. Going forward, want to highlight a little more about the opportunity with PG&E. And I want to take just a moment to allow Ann Cluse to, to come to the podium. She'd like to introduce the team who's here, both from PG&E, contractors, and Cree Lighting, and to talk a little bit about the project.
Good morning. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning. Some of the feedback we heard is that, you know, PG&E, you need to show up and speak up. So that's what we're going to do today. I'd like to introduce who I have here with me today. I have Erica Cabrera, who's the city's, your city's local PG&E public affairs rep. I also have Isaiah Franco, who's not in the chamber with us, but he is watching on the internet in Mexico right now. So, good morning, Isaiah. Also, Jason Gunther is your local customer relationship manager who deals with all service needs. And Jason is here as well. From our Bay Area PG&E team, we have John Sefranic, who's the manager over electrical assets, including streetlights. I want to note that John Sefranic joined PG&E when I was 10 years old, and he's been with the company for 46 years. He started out in the streetlight division. We're glad to have him back. Since he's returned to the streetlight division, he has overseen the installation or the conversion to LEDs for about a quarter of a million lights in our service territory. So we are really blessed to have John Sefranic on this project. Also, is Brent Betera. I think a lot of you have seen him. He's been involved in the project probably for the last five years. And he will be overseeing all the master service agreement, and he's keeping all the documents going forward. So we're pleased to have him here as well. Then also, who we brought in, is Jeffrey Gillis, who's the director of utility and roadway lighting for Cree Lighting. He is also here. He's at the national level. We also have Stephen Cole, who's the local representative for Cree for Northern California. So he is also here with me today. And then David Taylor, who's the owner of Advanced Lighting. He's one of the qualified contractors who will bid on this project. And he just is coming off the heels of the highly successful Bakersfield project, which is pretty, the turnkey PG&E program using Cree lighting, which is exactly what we're looking to replicate here. Only our project here would be about three times the size of the Bakersfield project. And he will speak on that during the public hearing as well to give you an idea of what they successfully pulled off in Bakersfield this summer. Then also, from IBW Local 100, we have Jake Pylund is also here with us, as well as Dave Clark from IBW Local 100. A few quick things that I want to touch on that have been brought up during previous hearings as well as council briefings is the issue of whether it's a sole source or piggyback competitive. And I know that that issue had come up. Because of California Government Code 4217, which was passed a while ago by the state of California, it gives cities, local governments, school districts, the ability to bypass their competitive bidding process to enter into an agreement for energy-related services. So California Government Code 4217 sits on the books. We've had a lot of cities and counties who are charter cities in California that have utilized that. The opportunity actually that exists for Fresno, under the piggyback and the cooperative agreement, is since we are your utility, we are heavily regulated by the government, I could tell you. And we also have a procurement process that mirrors yours. The way we put out to bid to make the determination of who has got the best, highest quality, best-priced product as far as what we use for fixtures, there is an entire procurement process we've been through twice to make that determination. And I've got John Sefranic, who can answer more questions about that if you want to go into detail. And then also, when it comes to actually awarding the bid to a contractor, we're going to put this out to bid, and there'll be contractors who are on our qualified list of contractors. They will bid on the project, and then the city will select if they desire the lowest bidder. So those opportunities that lie within our process is the reason we were able to have the designation. Also, I wanted to, I know that some of the council members had brought up specifically that they would like us to memorialize the use of local IBW 100 staff and workers in the project as needed for extra help. And I mean, there's quite a few other positions and duties that come into play. So not only are we committing to you today that, yes, we are going to do that, and that's why we brought the gentleman with us, we have already, Brent Betera has already inked it into the master service agreement. So it is already to be signed and entered into the agreement that we will do that. Not that we might do it, but that we're committed and we're going to do that. So I want to check that off the list. We got that done. Also, there was the issue of the 10-year warranty. Now, the gentleman from Cree will talk about the 10-year warranty. Actually, they'll brag about it because they're the kind of the ones in the industry that invented that, and they're the ones that started the trend. But some concerns were raised to me that it was being told to council members that PG&E is not going to have a workmanship warranty, and that when we're done, we're done. Well, first of all, California state law requires that we, there's a one-year warranty on workmanship. So obviously, not only are we following state law, it's already in the master services agreement. So I want you all rest assured that we have that covered as well. In fact, you could even discuss, staff can discuss, are you, when do you want that one-year warranty to start? Is it when it's the project reasonably done, upon completion? I mean, there's some flexibility, but I can guarantee you that it's in there. So you don't need to worry about that. The other issue that was raised is a concern that I guess there's some misinformation out there about lighting patterns and fixtures. Now, they'll go into more detail on that, but I can assure you, we also have flexibility on the lighting patterns and the fixtures as far as like when Scott had just described. They're going to go neighborhood by neighborhood to design this. And if there's a particular intersection that the police department or council members concerned about, high crime, they can actually make that intersection brighter if that is the desire. Or if there's a desire that there's a neighborhood that's currently receiving too much light, haven't heard a whole lot of that. But we can also address that as well. And in fact, I wanted to bring up the fact that in Clovis, this project, we converted 8,000 streetlights in Clovis to LED, Creeded, along with PG&E. It was our project. Out of 8,000 lights, there were zero complaints about spillover light or that the lights are too bright. There was two complaints out of 8,000. I think one was because there was no wiring in one of the poles. So that was obviously quickly rectified. And I think the one other complaint was there might have been a ballast or a fixture that was not right. So that quickly got switched out. So, you know, you want to look to the east, there's a success project for you as well to look at.
And I could add to that as well. With Eldorado Neighborhood, with the pilot program, we really wanted the alleyway lit up because of the vagrancy problem and the issues that come with an alley. So we, through your pilot program, were able to truly light up that alley, and it remains so today. And that's another appreciative aspect from the residents there. Whereas on the street side, we calmed that down a little bit. But with the police department's input, we got it balanced perfectly. So the residents are happy, the police department's happy. So we made that adjustment on that pilot program to make that work real well. So we, there's proof in the pudding. Again, thank you for, and your team for putting that together. That's a vital area of my district, and it's worked so well. So thank you.
You betcha. And when this goes citywide, I tell you, council members are going to get a lot of those kind of calls of people being appreciative and, you know, thanking you for the lights. The last item I wanted to cover is that I know the issue came up, and I've heard it in open session as well as from some of you, that PG&E can't be trusted because we have a conflict of interest, because our goal is to really sell you as much power. So we want you using more electricity. Well, that is blatantly false. In fact, we are right, we have CPUC goals to reduce your energy usage, which is the reason when we actually recommended to the city this project, we said you could save $1.9 million a year in energy. We could get you down to that level. Scott Moser, to his credit, goes, I want to be more conservative. Instead of grasping a hold of the 1.9 million in savings, I want to put it at 1.6. Because he said, I want the ability to meet the city standard. I do want to reduce energy usage, but there might be intersections or neighborhoods where we are actually going to increase and not go with the standard. And so, to his credit, he went on the more conservative route, which is where we all linked on to the 1.6 million in savings. So, and again, there's flexibility there depending on what we actually end up with. Finally, I would like to say is this team that I've introduced, they're here for questions as needed. We've already talked, we promised that when you open up, when you go to the next item, the agenda item, and there's public comment, they are not all going to be pulling a yellow slip. Because in, to be respectful of your time, we've narrowed down to three folks that will talk on our behalf, just to be respectful. But do not be afraid to ask anybody up for questions that you might have specifically. So, thank you very much. I just wanted to let you know, we are here and we're ready.
Thank you, Ann. And council, I just had a few more things to touch on, on the slides. Again, with PG&E, I'd also emphasize, as a public utility, following their competitive bid process, their RFP, their procurement, there are many projects that we do with other agencies wherein the other agency, even though there's city dollars involved, the other agency bids, hires contractors, awards, and specs. We've done multiple joint projects with City of Clovis, Fresno County, the Flood Control District, where again, the other agency, the other entity is, is doing that role, similar to what PG&E will do here. And those, those really are not sole source. Those are really cooperative or piggyback types of projects. So just to close out this slide again, as Ann Cluse touched on briefly, PG&E initially estimated our savings at $1.9 million a year. That would be just over a five-year return on investment. Based upon history of working in neighborhoods, working with a desire to increase lighting and not do a pure energy savings, but add a little bit, it's still saving, but not quite as much, we conservatively dialed that back down to 1.6 million, just to be sure that the project would still pencil and gets us to a six-and-a-half-year return on investment. So we may do even better. We may, we may be able to improve on our financials even beyond what's initially proposed.
Scott, with that in mind, I was just mentioning to my colleague here, if we're going to save 1.6 to 1.9 million dollars, is there any way to assure that that would go into street maintenance and sidewalks and tree trimming in our respective districts?
Council, as far as the savings, it is gas tax. So that is limited to streetwork, sidewalk repairs, lighting. It's also, gas tax would also be eligible to widen streets or do safety-type projects such as traffic signal installation. So that's, that's really a policy call and would come through the budget, annual budget process.
Thank you.
One item, I want to jump ahead to the bid matrix slide. Something the council had asked for is for, and we'd done this, but we had not put this in a slide or presentation as really a side-by-side. And I want to emphasize, we tried to do apples-to-apples to the greatest ability to look at the two delivery models. So with what's before you in the upcoming action item with PG&E turnkey, that has a construction budget of 9.9 million, including a contingency. Those are all PG&E cost and the contractors. That also includes city staff time that would be recovered through the on-bill finance loan of 320,000. That's your 10.2 million. By comparison, again, projects should have a construction contingency. And going through a bid process, we, again, assuming the other numbers you've received per light would hold up and not go higher due to insurance, bid specifications or requirements. But just assuming those still held and having an appropriate 10% contingency, that gets us to an open bid type process, adding soft costs to administer that, put together design packages for bid, were about 9.4 million versus 10.2. But really, as has been the case with other cities, such as City of Bakersfield, who've used, utilized the 0%, that is really the game changer that tips used, utilized the 0%, that is really the game changer that tips the scales. For, if we did not go with PG&E, we, although you've heard a number of 3.77% financing, we've looked at it and said, we think we could beat that, we think we could get it 3% through I-Bank and other sources, but even so, even going with only 3%, we wind up, again, with more than a million dollars in financing costs, interest to pay on that of the taxpayer dollars. And at the end of the day, we wind up with a total cost that would be higher, 10.6 versus 10.2. And at the end of the day, when we look at, when would that loan be repaid, that puts us about a year later of when we'd fully, fully capture that savings to go into streets, sidewalks, or other projects. So and again, the allowance on the 10.2 with PG&E is a very conservative engineer's estimate and could, it's not a bid from PG&E, that's one we collaboratively developed and that could cost less. We've talked a lot about just the safety benefits, I'm, you know, very excited, it feels like there's a lot of consensus with, with council members, the administration, a desire to be able to implement that for the city. We would, of course, use maintenance savings to address locations without power, and I can assure you, we'd be developing, we have staff looking into technology for the post tops, and we'd like to be able to move a parallel project forward as soon as we can. Those are just so important with the aesthetics, the ambiance of the neighborhood, many people like the glow of the lights, and so we really want to get that right and not have something out there that'd be rejected by the community. The last one that I really wanted to cover was just a comparison on lighting patterns. Typically, although we want the, the LED quality, we typically want to replicate what's there. So what these di, three diagrams show is, on the left is the existing, the high pressure sodium, the 70 watt fixture that we have. The vertical line shows you roughly where the curb line is, so in other words, to the left of that vertical line is the sidewalk and say someone's front yard, to the right is out in the paved area of the street. So just again, we like, staff, we, we have Cree lights in service today, we have GE, we have LeoTech and American Electric, we have four different products out there. We like a lot of things about the Cree, we see them in Clovis. One thing they do is they, they replicate a lot of what the 70, the high pressure sodium the pattern is. In other words, so if we have homeowners who are used to having, just today, we're not adding any new lights, these are just change, changing a fixture. If we have homeowners who are used to their sidewalk in front of their home being lit up, a little bit being thrown in, say, the driveway, we, we replicate that, we wind up keeping that in place. With the GE pattern, more elongated true, it's more efficient as far as if we just look at the pavement, how much light we put there, but we lose a lot behind. We, we, so if we were looking at that product as we did, the ones we have in place today, we, we had a higher watt, we had a, we have a 29 watt GE out in service today. And with that, again, we have other slides and information in the packet, but wanted to be sensitive at the time, and staff and also the team is available for any questions. Thank you.
Scott? I have a, I have a couple of questions right now, because you just kind of closed on one of my concerns, which I had mentioned to you when we met privately during the last week. When it comes to the lights themselves, and you've given us three examples here, you've given us, what we currently have in the high pressure sodium, then you've given us example of the Cree and the GE, are there variables within those manufacturers that we could be able to use out in neighborhoods, should a certain neighborhood require it? So in my mind, and I mentioned this to you as an example, but we have some neighborhoods, we have many neighborhoods that are just straight streets, and everybody knows about those. And then we, but in Northwest Fresno, we have some neighborhoods with curved streets, and you could think to, in, in your mind, you could think, maybe there's a better lighting for cer, circumstances. Do we have flexibility to use any different style of lighting than the ones illustrated right here for a special purpose?
Absolutely, and actually, each of the manufacturers that are out there have lights that fit different situations. So for example, even when home builders, developers are designing new subdivisions and they work with us, there's always a special light for a cul-de-sac or a knuckle where 90 degree comes together, that's one case, there's always a mid-block situation, intersections have a different, different lighting type, even if we had a street that say had very, very heavy tree canopy and, and a neighborhood where we had constituents saying, we'd like more lighting in there, there's opportunity in each one. And so even within Cree, the, these are not a one size fits all, it's not one fixture that just automatically gets plopped in everywhere. That is the neighborhood by neighborhood design.
Okay. And then you, you just mentioned the tree canopy, and when I first became a council member, I went out and started replacing a couple of light bulbs in District Two, became popular, Councilman Capriolio jumped on board, and we've got a new convert over there, Councilman Chavez is replacing some streetlights. So I did notice that, you know, in all reality, we, we ended up taking some pruning shears in some small instances where we needed small branches out of the way, but there are other bigger tree problems where the tree is growing up right next to a light and has essentially overtaken the light. In this process of installing the new LED lights around Fresno, will the tree problems that intersect the light, will those be taken away as well, or will that be included in this big overhaul of our streetlights?
Again, we, we have to be a little bit careful there in just that the energy savings and on-bill financing can't, can't wind up being turned into, say, even though we have great needs for tree trimming, we can't wind up doing it, but if there's a tree that needs to be trimmed for access to the light, something in the way, that is, that is a project cost to have those addressed.
Oh, so that, that's, cost is built into the project, not into the tree trimming funding that we voted on a little over a month ago?
That is correct, although also I can say that just in our own operations, when we need to go out and make a repair, it's extremely rare that one of our streetlight electricians cannot address the minor trimming that's needed around that light. They're not, they're not needing to call the tree, for example, Erin Agary, my landscape division manager's tree crew, or our, our, or West Coast Arborist to come out and do that type of heavy trimming of major limbs.
Okay. In, in the assessment, so my understanding from the meeting that we had is that PG&E has actually already been out in the field assessing all of the streetlights in the City of Fresno. Is that the time when they discover, okay, of the 35,000 streetlights, you have, say it's 2,500 of them impacted by trees, or does it happen when they're out replacing the streetlight, and then they say, okay, we have to deal with this tree, or do we already know?
Let me ask, PG&E could perhaps address, address that question, just as far as when the, when the tree issue comes up?
As he approaches the microphone, what I did with my 567 lights that I touched, when there was a tree issue, I, I quite frankly, I'd asked the homeowner, if I trim this, you put it in your, your green bin? And 100% said yes, so I trimmed it up for him as best I could, I, I can't get the big branches, but I could do plenty of lopping, and it worked out really well, created a relationship with that resident and myself as well as the city, so it was pretty, it worked for me for a lot, a lot of lights. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. As far as the tree trimming is concerned, we, we did account for that. Anything that's covering the actual light itself, we accounted for that during the actual inventory, so we have that. And just to answer the question around the light tri, trimming, so we'll hit that twice, so when we've done the inventory, we know where all those trees are and how many lights are actually affected, but when the contractor actually goes out there and actually trims as well, it'd get noted again. So, but typically, we're looking at just getting access so we can actually change the light. So when we're all said and done, the contractor that goes out there and actually changes the lights itself, if there's extensive tree trimming, as you mentioned, that's something that'll actually get noted and we'll share that with the city.
Perfect, thank you.
Steve, I guess that means I retire, or we retire our lopping shears.
Sounds like it, huh?
It's pretty well accounted for.
All right, I, I'm done with my questions, thanks Scott.
Councilmember Bretta Phil.
Yes, I was just wondering about the representative from Tanco Lighting, when the presentation was going, you seemed to have a lot of disagreements, I'd invite you up to make any comments you might want to make.
If you can state your name.
My name's Alex Wurzel from Tanco Street Lighting. As you mentioned, there were a number of items that were brought up, the comparison of the conservative offer of 9.5, 9.9 million, I believe it was, the, the offers that Tanco provided, again, they were used on another public bid that was awarded earlier this year, is a firm offer of nearly $2 million less than that of PG&E. The other thing that we're still confused about is the streetlight inventory. The PG&E master services agreement states that 35,412 lights will be converted, but according to the inventory given to Tanco by the city staff, there are only 33,000 Cobra heads within the city. So if PG&E will not be converting the decorative lights, we simply want to better understand how that 35,400 number was reached, so that a true apples to apples comparison can truly be provided. But again, our numbers that we included, included those decorative lights, the 2,500, and it is still at a $200 million delta to the PG&E offer. Some of the other things that were brought up in regards to financing, I know the 0% financing has a particular flash, it looks very good, but we have run the numbers using alternative offers, again, and as we mentioned to everyone, those offers are not set in stone. We are happy to get other financing offers that are cheaper for the city, we have run public bids on behalf of cities for financing to get the cheapest rate, we have no vested interest in where that money comes from. But most importantly, a private offer, even if the city paid a little bit of fin, of interest over the next, say, four to five years, would accrue immediate savings starting year one for the city. That's money that can be put into each of your districts, into street paving, rather than waiting for eight years until 2026 to realize savings under the PG&E on-bill financing program. Thank you.
Scott? So, this gentleman is saying there would obviously be immediate savings if we use alternative financing, number one, then PG&E, also that there's 2.2 million dollar savings to the city with the upfront costs. Is he wrong?
Uh, we have, we have met with Tanco Lighting, and as I advised, they had not interpreted the city's GIS data on street lighting correctly. There are 35,400 Cobra heads approximately that would be addressed and converted, the decoratives are in addition to that, so when, if we were to add that, 2,800, I mean, that, that really gets us to 38,000. So for the apples to apples, what we did, even, even though, you know, for example, Tanco project from City of Santa Clarita, 14,000 lights and looking at a per pole cost and the, the number they'd provide at the 7.9, that was for, you know, roughly over 35,000. We, we actually did the math and got the numbers exactly the same and looking at the cost. But again, I, I would recommend to the council that a contingency would be appropriate during construction because of other, other factors that come up that are not known, especially not having done, if, if someone has not done a full inventory and really assessed everything as, as we've done today.
Is it, is it accurate, though, that he's saying that it would be 2.2 million dollars savings going with Tanco upfront, in contrast to PG&E? Are you saying that? Okay, so, you, you can come up.
In addition, if there are actually 35,400 Cobra heads within the city, Tanco's offer would in fact get cheaper. If we are, we are including those decorative lights, which are at a higher cost than our cheapest Cobra head turnkey conversion. So if we remove those 2,500 decorative lights or 2,800 and replace them with Cobra head equivalents, our project cost goes down even lower.
Okay. And so Scott, I'd like you to address that, as well as, I, I don't feel like I'm getting the answer, is there a 2.2 million dollar savings with Tanco upfront versus using PG&E?
I would suggest the answer would be no, again, because with PG&E, that is not a bid of 9.9 for the work, that's not a bid, that is a conservative estimate we developed, so in essence, that's a budget amount, until PG&E, they have three pre-qualified contractors who with each portion of the city, we get them set to go, they, they bid the work, and that's a low bid item, it's not a guaranteed, they're, they're, they're going to get to use all of those dollars. So we're talking, I mean, we're really talking a, a budget number, a conservative number that includes contingencies versus what a gentleman from Tanco is referencing, is just an estimate of what they would bid with that, and that bid would not include contingencies because we need to go out, we can't have one change order and say we don't have money for it. We, we anticipate on projects, there are, there are things, there are unforeseen's that come up, and we need, need to add dollars.
Can you give me a second? So what I'm going to do, because it seems like we're getting into the next item, why don't we close the workshop? And then we'll continue this discussion with, with the next item, the action item? Because that's what we're discussing, we're discussing the action item, so, so the debate should, should continue during the action item.
I think it's sixes, six to one, half a dozen the other, that's okay with me.
Okay.
Talk about it no matter what.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll go ahead to the 1005, number two, which is the action item, I don't know if you have more to add in terms of the presentation, Scott, for that item, from what you guys already presented in the workshop?
Council, I'd simply just want to summarize, the recommended action includes approval of on-bill finance loan agreements and a master services agreement with PG&E, that would allow the project to move forward, again, with neighborhood by neighborhood design and implementing that citywide, really, starting in September and completing in 12 to 15 months. Staff and the team were available with any questions.
With that in mind, the council president will make a motion to approve that action item. Well, can, can I finish the question?
Yeah. So there is a motion in a second, but you can continue asking the question.
Scott, so again, as I'm asking about the 2.1, you're saying the difference is that PG&E has a contingency in place, but Tanco would not, and that's the savings, is that what you're suggesting?
Correct. So to put them side by side, with the first line, let me go back in the, in the slide to the side by side matrix. So with contingency, again, I know, I know we have a company who's focusing on, on a bid amount, or a potential bid amount, we, of 7.9, but when we add a contingency to it, then we're really talking 8.7 versus 9.9. So now we're talking a spread of 1.2 million dollars between them. And that, that save, that difference, even though that's a savings, that gets eaten up and the scales get tipped by two factors. One is the city's soft cost to administer, because with PG&E, they're really taking on our role, it's not that they're taking on the contractor's role, they're really taking on our role of doing certified payrolls for prevailing wage, ensuring the IBW, the, the labor usage, they're paying the contractors, they're getting the bids, putting packages together, they're doing all of that work. What happens is then that shifts over to us, to our staff, who were very capable of doing it, but we acknowledge that cost additional dollars. That, that now gets us midway through, now we're down to an $800,000 difference between it, still, you know, the PG&E option, again, with contingency being a little higher, and the financing winds up tipping the scales at that point.
Their argument with the financing is that they would have alternative financing that would actually save us more money as well. But anyway, I'd like to let the gentleman from Tanco first respond to what you're saying.
In regards to the item that any payment of subcontractors or that Tanco is not taking on the responsibility on behalf of the city, that's, that's not accurate. Tanco acts as a consultant on behalf of the city to guide you through the turnkey conversion process. We are no more off, offhand than, than PG&E may be, all payments to subcontractors for material, all of that is handled by us, none of that is administered by the city. The entire point, I mean, the very core of our business model's being is that the city does not have to burden itself with those particular items.
And what about this 2.1 that is, that's whittled down to 800,000?
So the 7.9 million, yes, was a firm cost based on the inventories that we were provided by the city. So the 7.9 million, yes, was a firm cost based on the inventories that we were provided by the city. We often recommend a 10% contingency be improved, or rather included within the project, if the city wants to take into design, design parameters that would go over that cost. So 10%, that would be about 800,000. That does dig into that 2.2 million dollar difference, but that money, similar to the way PG&E's would be, is not money that you would have to pay if you don't use it. It would, money that would be saved directly by the city. And that's where we have provided the Santa Clarita model, which shows you the per-unit turnkey cost, exactly what that number is. So that if you opt to install a different wattage of light or opt to remove lights, that quantity is very simply calculated to understand how much you're saving or how much additional that you are spending.
Okay, and what, how much do you think you would be saving the city with this alternative financing that you talked about?
I apologize, my presentation is over there, but I believe that we estimated within the first, by 2026 and between the first 10 years of the two projects, the city will save about 3.3, 3.5 million dollars using the PG&E offer. But if the city were to pay off a portion of the loan every year and pocket the difference, that is, I believe, 6.4, 6.6 million within the first 10 years in delta.
That's what you're saying, you're, you would be able to save the city?
That is correct. And, and again, that financing offer is only a placeholder. We are happy to solicit offers on behalf of the city, as we've done for any of our clients that we work with, more than 120 of them around the nation.
What, what cities in California have you done this?
Oakland, Hayward, Modesto, Berkeley, Santa Clarita, Ranch Cucamonga, Fullerton, Tustin, pardon me, La Puente, Laverne, Napa. You have to excuse me, it's about 40 cities long, I don't have to complete one memorized, but I've spent the last two and a half years of my career working the Southern California market who have been fighting tooth and nail to get access to their street lighting system the way that you do now. And when those cities have acquired their lights, which just started, they have not turned to Southern California Edison to provide a turnkey solution. They instead put out qualitative and quantitative bids for an impartial third-party expert to help guide them through the process.
Why did, why did they not hand it over to Southern, Southern California Edison?
Because those cities do believe that there is a conflict of interest, having the utility who profits from how much energy you spend recommending how much energy you save. Again, it's not to say that PG&E's intent is meant to be malicious, but that is the reality of the situation. So all of those cities put out qualitative and quantitative bids.
Okay, Scott, with this alternative financing, and you, you talked about the 2.1 and whittling it down, he's just saying there's, you know, $6 million in savings with alternative financing? Do you disagree? Do you dispute that?
I do disagree. And our city controller has looked at this, along with Public Works, and our assistant city manager, Jane Sumter, has been heavily involved in looking at these. And at the end of the day, there's energy savings, which is really the same either way, because we're, we're going to do neighborhood-by-neighborhood design. We're going to wind up in the same wattage range. Part, about a million dollars of that, of that savings in the Tanco package was related to being able to go to a lower, lower wattage fixture. 22 watt versus, say, something in the 25 to 30. We, we would not anticipate, I mean, that doesn't meet our specification. That's too dim in the neighborhood, so that, that part needs to go away. And then really, we talk about construction costs, soft costs, and then the financing. And with the financing, the city still has to pay, pay the loan. So that, and that's a function of what, what is the cost? What is the interest rate? And then the term of repayment. We factored all that in going both ways. And again, we've had our own financial experts looking at that, because we, really, we want the best, we want the best for the city.
Absolutely. Go ahead, come on up, Ann.
Yeah, additionally, there's a, a few points I would like to make with Brent Patera, who's industry expert, he's been really involved in this, and there's a few things he would like to call out, kind of a reality check, if you will. And he'll address some of, of what's been discussed.
Good morning, everyone, Brent Patera, PG&E. I'm really not going to be contrary in any way, my intention is just to point out things that I heard. And I want to speak specifically about the on-bill financing program, which you've heard about a couple of times, 0% interest. I think a point in that is it's really designed and run and enforced by the California Public Utilities Commission, so it has some strict rules. One is that the measure that's being undertaken, SBI Energy Savings, that's obvious. The second is that that return on investment needs to be less than 10 years. And the third is, is that the energy savings from your bill, right, has to be equivalent to the debt service. Now, 0% interest debt service and loan payment and energy savings are all exactly the same thing over the course of time. So we know that when you look at energy cost savings on the bill, let's use 100 units of cost, 80 units of savings after the project, that means you have 20 units of cost savings. That 20 units of cost must, must fully pay for debt service on an annual basis and maximize the return on investment or the payback. Makes sense? So I can't, in other words, say, I get 20 units of savings, oh, I might spend that on a half of a FTE or something like that from savings to create positive cash flow and only pay back a portion of the bill. Or theoretically, borrow more money than the project actually costs above the savings and then call that somehow cash flow, which would mean you're essentially borrowing money for yourself over the term of a loan with an interest rate. Our program doesn't, our program, the program we enforce on behalf of the POC requires strictly that, that savings from the project, which in this case would be that 1.6 to use for discussion, on a monthly basis, 100% has to go to payment. So I think that's a mischaracterization about how financing would be done. There is no creative financing, as far as we're concerned. Costs and debt and savings are all equivalent to one another. I think, I think one point that occurs to me, and I'm not an engineer, but having seen comparison, is that the usage for energy savings on our project is specifically designed to make sure we accommodate for the right lighting. And you've seen the lighting diagrams between how coverage works, between the traditional high-pressure sodium, the product that we're most familiar with, with this Decree, and then another typical product from another manufacturer. We have to use in our program what we believe to be the appropriate lighting levels, which means the appropriate wattage. So we could, as I think Scott alluded to, if you wanted to, reduce that wattage. If you want to trick up the, the numbers by using a fixture that probably doesn't cover enough light, and we could get the numbers any way we want. I think the final thing I'd like to point out is, as a result of the industry, and I, I only have these numbers generally, but it's indicative from your guys' inventory. If you remember that diagram, it assumes about a arm length of about three feet. So that means that the City of Fresno has, I think, about 80% of their arms on their streetlights are larger than three feet, typically five, six, or seven. So now you've got a streetlight in your mind that used to be close to the sidewalk, and so some of the light and some of the backlight would be on the sidewalk. If your poles are actually typically six to eight or 10 feet, now that light all gets shifted to the right, right? And so now there's a bias towards the street. And so, you know, there's a possibility that backlight is, or that light on the interior side may not even be in the gutter at this point. So this is conceptually, and we haven't finished all the photometrics yet, which is the design of that, but that's my sense. Yeah, I guess the final point is if there's any concern about, you know, that Councilmember Caprulio had a, a project and maybe others of light intrusion on the sidewalk side, Decree makes a mechanical shield that allows us on an isolated basis to either shield those from the house light, shield them from the street side, or shield them from either side. And those are rarely available in Decree's inventory. We've used them sparingly throughout the territory.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, I'm gonna let the gentleman from Tanco make his comments, and then I just have a couple of comments for Scott, and then I'll, I'll wrap up.
Thank you, Councilmember. In regards to arm length, you know, Tanco is working off of typicals when we run our photometrics, and we have not been able to run photometrics knowing that there are eight-to-10-foot arms within the city. And this kind of hammers down to really what we are asking city council to do is that a true one-to-one comparison really has not been done with these two items. We've, we've received some information several months ago from Public Works, but information on arm length or other parameters that allow us to do our design that we have when we do our audits hasn't been provided in any way. What we're really proposing is just that if the PG&E offer really is the best thing for the City of Fresno, why not put it out to public bid and market test it? There are, you know, as procurement was talking about, sole source is usually utilized in the event where there are, you know, only a very small number of specified people that really have the expertise to do this. But we compete on a national level for jobs of this nature, and we compete with some of the largest billion-dollar companies that are out there. So if this offer truly is the best thing for the City of Fresno, why not allow multiple bidders from outside parties to provide a true one-to-one comparison and let the city make the choice that's best for itself?
Okay, and Scott? He's asking the question that I was gonna ask, basically. And I don't know if Jane wanted to say some, why are we not, I know you've done a sole source. He's done, Tanco's done sole source, but why not put this out to bid and see if this truly, there are greater cost saves? This gentleman is talking about millions of dollars that he says his company could save the City of Fresno. I'm hesitant to be supporting moving this forward with PG&E, perhaps leaving millions of dollars on the table and money that should be to the taxpayers. So why not?
Counsel, if, if I may?
Yeah.
I think this kind of boils down to just a couple of really important points. One is the, the 0% financing. There is no financing that you are going to be able to find that's better than 0%. So any representation that they can go out, that anyone can go out and find better financing. I don't know how you can improve upon a 0% financing deal. I also don't know how you improve upon PG&E fronting all of the cost. And so we would not be expending any of our own money until such time as the project is completed, which is not the case when you go out to an open bid process. And then, again, coming back to the matrix that is up on the, on the board again, in, in response, yes, we do require a 10%, a 10% contingency because we do for most of our construction projects. And so that would have to be added on to any open bid process, which, by the way, would be open to all bidders, not just the ones in this room. And then you also do have the additional costs of project management and engineering, which are done on every capital project, would not have to be done on this project using PG&E's general contractor oversight. And so that would have to be added to the project cost as well, because that's what we do on every capital project, regardless of what it is. I don't care whether it's LED lights, I don't care whether it's anything else. We have project management costs that need to be covered, and that would be done. And then, of course, we come again, once, once again, to the, the financing, which would at least add a 3% loan possibility, would be at least another million dollars. So I think that, that we have examined this extensively. We have worked with PG&E extensively to try to come up with the very best deal that, that is for the, the city taxpayers and, and for the ratepayers. PG&E has the experience of doing this from the beginning to the end, not just the audits that have been done, but they also have the experience of actually doing the project, which is not always the case with some of the other entities that are out there. They have done portions of these projects, but they have not done the entire project. And so I would submit to you that we, we have looked at this from many different viewpoints and that we have the, the best deal for the city before you now. So thank you.
Okay, and did you have any comment, sir?
Directly to the assistant city manager's comments, we are not suggesting that 3.7% is better than zero. We're simply presenting it as an alternative that could accrue the city savings immediately, rather than waiting for several years. In terms of who fronts the upfront cost, that is on the lending party, whether it be GE, TCF, Graybar Financial, Bank of America, whoever it may be. All of that money is fronted by them. In both of these options, the city pays no money out of its own pocket. In terms of who manages the project, Tanco is solely responsible for managing all 120 of our projects around the country from start to finish. And all of the contractors who have bid on this, Tanco, Siemens, Johnson Controls, potentially Amoresco, any of those companies have managed these projects from start to finish. And that's why these projects are a combination of quantitative and qualitative analysis to really ensure that you're getting the most qualified respondent to help you do the project. So the idea that parts are being left off in terms of engineering or soft costs or anything like that in regards to offer is simply not accurate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Baines, you're up. Are your comments gonna be, you think?
No, they're not short. I, I can't even lie to you. I wouldn't have it wrapped up in, in five minutes.
I know some, some of the colleagues, my colleagues have lunch meetings, so I don't know if, if I could get a consensus of folks. We recess for lunch and then come back to provide a final discussion and vote.
I could probably finish before noon, if you want to let me speak.
I, I can't finish before noon.
Oh, I can, if you just want to call on me, I can get my comment out of the way.
But I'm, I'm up to talk.
Right, but if you wanted to let me?
But, but, but I still have some questions, so. I can't finish before noon, I'm sure you can.
Well, do you want to let me go?
You can, please, go right ahead.
Okay, just a quick, all right, you know what, it's 11:56, I probably could do it in five minutes, but not four.
That's bullying.
No, no, you have the floor, that's fine.
Four minutes.
No, I can't do it.
Okay, so let's recess for now, we'll be back at 1:30. Item that, where we were left off right before lunch. And I believe Councilmember Baines was up for comments and questions.
All right. So I'm apparently next up, and I've been, I have a few questions. And the first thing I wanted to do, though, if, if at all possible, because I don't think that this has been, this has been a real disjointed process, unfortunately. And there are some things I think that have to be clarified from my standpoint, that I've, the last couple of weeks, I've actually met with Tanco, I've met with staff, I've met with PG&E. I've met with everybody to try to get really a real clear picture of what we're doing today, what we're being asked to do, and what's going on. So, and I, and I'm, as I've been listening to the questioning, a lot has not been clarified on, on either end. So I want to try, try my best to ask some questions to do that. And I know I'll get there, but I do want to highlight that this process should have been done differently. So the council is relatively confused, and we probably should not be, but, and there are some things that could have been done differently to, to ensure that we weren't. Well, cap's not confused. So Scott, can you, can you come up to lecter, please? Because what I want to attempt to do first, what, what I think is important, is talk about, this has been referenced, that we are sole sourcing this, this contract. And I asked you a couple of weeks ago, in, in the hearing here, why we are sole sourcing this. And your response was along the line of, because of the 0%. And subsequent meetings with you and I, we talked about sole sourcing, sole sourcing. I listened to the representative from Tanco refer to this as sole sourcing. Are we sole sourcing this?
We are not. We'd be utilizing PG&E's competitive procurement process.
So, so my, my good friend over there is, is laughing, but I, I think that in order to have the, the conversation properly, we've gotta, we've gotta start there. And, and so, yeah, I will give you an opportunity to, to chat, because I, I do want to hear from you as well. But what I did learn is that, and let me ask, is this a piggyback?
A strict piggyback would be where another agency has, let's say, they've gone out and bid out prefab park restrooms. And then we say, let's, let's, let's get that exact same one.
Is this, are what we doing, or is what we are doing a piggyback?
It is similar to a piggyback, but not a strict piggyback.
Doug, can you, can someone please clarify what exactly we're doing?
Yes. This process does not strictly pigeonhole into any of the standard historical practices because there's a new state law, or a state law that says, here's a Because there's a new state law, or a state law that says, here's a special process that you can use here. It's a hybrid between a normal competitive procurement that we might do. And then the special process that is allowed for these energy types of projects, which PG&E has done, and PG&E has conducted their own competitive process. So it's not one of the standard piggyback or sole source. It's its own process is really the only way to explain it.
So, well, we're gonna try to explain it, cause it's important. So has there been a competitive process?
Yes.
Can you describe, as a matter of fact?
Go ahead, Brandon.
I'd like for someone to describe to me what the competitive process has been. I don't know if it's you Scott, or someone from PG&E, but I would, because there's been a lot of debate over whether or not this is a sole source, or it's not, whether it was competitively bid, whether market forces are actually, have actually come into play. And my questioning needs to start there. Has this, has the market?
Let me give a, counsel, if I may give just brief overview. And then city attorney's office and PG&E may wanna weigh in. There are three components to the project, really. One is the project management, construction management component. So PG&E would be handling that. That is most similar to what we do when, for example, the county of Fresno would bid, award, and inspect a project for us that we're involved with. We do that quite often. That's one component. There's a competitive process for the fixture procurement. PG&E went through that process through an RFP. Multiple manufacturers, vendors, suppliers competed for that, submitted all their products and pricing. Out of that, PG&E entered into a requirements contract with Cree lighting for that. The last component is the construction contractors who do the work. And PG&E, much like what we would do, pre-qualified contractors, there are three. And then with each segment of project that goes out, they'd be receiving bids. And then working with us to select that low bidder.
Okay, Brendan, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, and if you have anything to add, I'm fine with that.
No, actually Scott covered that quite well. I just wanna let you know on the competitive bid, we've actually been out to bid twice. So we've been through that process twice because we don't just stick with it. You know, we'll go back through it again. So as far as the selection of Cree, that process has happened twice.
Okay, so Doug, or Brendan, whoever is the correct person to answer this question. So there was a competitive process that occurred. PG&E did it on our behalf. Is that what I'm to understand?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, and they used our procurement practices?
No. It's not correct really to say they did it on our behalf. They did it and then we are utilizing that process because they've done it for others too.
Okay, so they've already, so they've already competitively bid this project?
Yes.
So if, when we say, so let me ask this. Because it's causing a lot of confusion for, and Scott, that was a really good explanation. I appreciate that. So Tango is saying that this is not a competitive process. In my mind, they sound correct in saying that because this feels and looks like a sole source. So when they say this is not a competitive process, are they correct?
No, there was a competitive process. But like I say, it doesn't squarely pigeonhole with our traditional competitive processes that we would do.
Who has the control in this process? For instance, while PG&E did the procurement of fixtures, contractors, what have you. Do, does the city of Fresno ultimately have the control in, in who, what contractors we use? Or what have you?
The city does have control.
Okay.
So the city is allowed to, PG&E is allowing us to select whichever contractor according to whichever standards we would like. So the city has the option to choose the lowest responsive, responsible bidder if it chooses to do so.
Okay, so now, sir, please come forward. And I don't know how long this is gonna take, so everybody's just gonna have to be patient.
Thank you.
But, so you heard now our process. I wanna, you and I met a couple of days last week, maybe it was last week. So, yeah, and then, and at that time, before I got clarification about whether or not this was competitive. So I wanna make sure we're all clear. There was a competitive process. Now, what I'd like to know, and maybe I shouldn't ask you this first. Could, and maybe I'll ask, let me, hold on. Brendan, could Tango have bid when PG&E put out this project? As a qualified bidder?
I'm not aware if Tango is an actual contractor, or if they're a broker.
You guys are not a contractor.
We are not contractors. We are a consulting project management firm that subcontract out that work.
Got it, so you could not have bid on that project? Okay, so if we actually went out for a competitive process, how would you guys bid with us? Because we would probably have a, we would require a contractor to bid. How would that work for you all?
Absolutely, so part of our nationwide model is that Tango responds as the prime contractor. We have a electrical contractor's license here within the state of California. And we subcontract out the similar way that PG&E is subcontracting out the physical work to local subcontractors. We do the same. We personally vet subcontractors prior to the bid. And the city ends up having final sign-off in the end as well. So if the city wants to go with us, but decides that it doesn't like the contractor we've selected, you are within your right to reject them and ask us to find somebody else. Where, where we don't believe the true, the true competitive process has been done is, like you said, PG&E's process was done internally. And then the city is choosing to ride on that process. But a true competitive process for a comprehensive turnkey solution would go out to consultants from all over the country, potentially. And city staff did reference specifically the sole source forty-two-ten, I believe it's that, forty, four-point-two-point-ten, four-point-two-point-seventeen, that is the California sole source law. In the very first meeting when this project was being awarded.
Okay, thank you. Anne, can I ask you a question, please? And I'm taking some time to do this because I think it's important. Cause we need to understand about this. So when you all bid this out, how many respond? Do you have any idea how many responders you all had to?
Let me have Brent and John Sopranic who were involved in that.
Good afternoon again, Brent Patera, PG&E.
So what I'm really trying to find out, because there's been a lot made of the competitive nature of this process. And candidly, I've been very uncomfortable with the fact that this appears to be a sole source. However, I have found, I have found out that there were competitive elements to this process. And I think that's important to understand. Talk to me about the competitive nature and the competition and market forces that were involved in your bid process.
Okay, first, I'd like to clarify the forty-two-seventeen dot ten dot eighteen reference. It's not strictly a sole source reference. So it's not an on or off. It allows the city to have modified procurement under Public Works Law.
Okay, but that's not my question, so.
Fair enough.
I got you.
Right, so our procurement process, we're large. We have offices in downtown San Francisco and we have a large procurement organization. We put a specification together, probably, the first one probably went together six years or so, seven years ago. I believe that the statistics were twenty manufacturers at the time joined that solicitation from our centralized procurement organization. We're hands-off on that, right? Much like I think you do, you hand the specs to the organization, they run a professional procurement. And we, I think we down-selected two, two or three at that time. And we visited those locations and we chose Cree based on a variety of elements that were required by procurement, including cost. Since that program has started again back in six years ago, maybe seven years ago, we use procurement to find qualified installation contractors throughout our service territory. I believe the original number of those was...
So the, people bid on, they actually submit a bid to you all, you guys evaluate that bid?
I'll close the loop on that for you, sir. So we get the qualified contractors first, right? And I have to be honest that over the years, now we've done this six or seven years, that list has grown and changed. And people have come on and come off for a variety of reasons. We're very strict on safety of PG&E, so very strict safety requirements and history on the contractors. Anyways, as Scott mentioned, there's three contractors currently in that program. And every scope of work that we do in the project, once it's been finalized, is submitted to those contractors. They provide their response bid, quote, whatever you wanna call it. And we share that with the city or with the customer. And together, we choose whichever one that is.
So there are only three contractors that you guys, you guys work with?
Are currently three, yes.
Okay, Scott, let me ask a question, please. If we, if we were to bid this project internally, how many contractors do you think would have responded to a project of this size? You can give me an estimate?
Likely more than three, probably in the range of five to six. However, if we just did that with what we normally do, you know, ninety-five percent of the time, we are not pre-qualifying contractors. At times, there have been discussions that perhaps that we should be doing more of that.
What's the benefit of that?
The benefit of that is ensuring we have contractors who are able to have a very solid delivery on the project. They have a track record. They have the capabilities, the right workforce to do the job. When we do not pre-qualify and simply take the low bid, the vast majority of times, things work fine. But every now and then, we have a contractor who is not performing. The contract, council's awarded a contract and here we are, someone's not moving forward. They're months behind schedule. And then we at times get involved with defaulting those contractors to try to get them to perform. And we've had a handful of those in recent years.
So had, so had we internally bid this project out, you suspect that we'd have maybe five, five or six different contractors to bid? So PG&E has three qualified contractors. And the three of them bid on this project and then you all, and I'm looking at Anne, not you Scott, I'm looking at Anne to make sure I got it right. And the three of, the three of them are selected out of, out of your evaluation process? And then, and then you make that recommendation obviously to the city and then, okay. Okay, and the gentleman I was talking, walked out of the room. But I believe he said there were twenty different light manufacturers that were, that it, sir? I, forgive me for not remembering your name, but I wanted to make, I wanna make sure I have this right.
Sorry.
You said twenty different light vendors responded?
I believe the number was twenty.
About twenty?
Yeah.
Okay, 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 thank you. So, and Tango, and I forgot, I forgot your name, but Alex, come on, come back down. I wanted to give you the opportunity, if you needed to, to respond to that. Because I want us to really get down to the bottom line of the sole sources, the sole source versus competitive process. I think we've been mischaracterizing this as calling it a sole source. But there was a competitive process. And I wanna make sure that, I wanna see if you understand that part from my perspective.
No, I certainly do. The competitive process was done internally within PG&E.
And it would have been done internally with us?
Yes.
Right.
Where we don't think the competitive process was fully done was that staff reviewed offers outside of PG&E as the primary sole, so PG&E is your prime contractor. They are subcontracting to two or three other subcontractors to do the physical labor. So we do not think that a true public vetting process of the prime contractor has really been done. So in most of these public bids, you have a prime contractor of Tango, Siemens, Amoresco, anybody like that. Those are your prime contractors who then subcontract out to others for various portions of the work.
Okay, so that's your distinction is on the prime contractors being competitively bid?
Correct. PG&E's offer seems to have been fully accepted by city staff as well as other members. And we don't believe that a true evaluation or the allowance of a true apples-to-apples comparison has been done on the prime contract itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Scott, let me ask you about that. Had we, had we bid this out internally, would we have bid this out to prime contractors as he's represented, Alex is representing? So for instance, we would have put this out to bid, would there have been a number of prime contractors that would have submitted bid, bids like PG&E's where they would have had their own competitive process? And what have you? Is that what, is that, is that what would have happened?
Counsel, if we had not had the opportunity with the zero percent and we'd been looking at financing on our own, or basically soliciting private financing, or really the I-bank, we can do far better than what that 3.77%. But if we had done that, what we would have done is we would have had a, an adopted project in the budget. That would have included the initial engineering work. We would have identified the lighting levels, the locations to be done. And then we would have put that out to bid. And that would be, that would be a traditional low bid contract under that approach. The financing costs would have been lower than the private sector can offer. Simply because we would have involved California Energy Commission, 1% financing for some of it, the I-bank at three. Simply working with our city controller and other agencies. There's no, other than a zero percent on bill finance, there's no way to beat that. You're not, as a counsel, you're not hearing some opportunity for a 2% or a one and a half, or a half percent, nothing like that. So we would have bid that out. And contractors who have licensing, bonding requirements would, you know, would be able to bid.
So, so, and let me, let me see if I can reframe this question differently. Had we done our own internal processes, would we have simply used a prime contractor and allowed them to sub out all the work? Or would we have gone through and individually bid each aspect of this project?
We typically would have utilized a prime contractor if we could have subs. However, we would not have been looking for a consultant to provide a turnkey type of service with that. Simply because that, that's not, if we were having to pay financing costs and all of those interest expenses, then that's not a service that we would feel, a staff that we would need. We would feel very competent in being able to put together those bid packages and go forward and get the very lowest price from contractors for that work.
Okay. Alright, so let me, let me say this in closing this part of the discussion down. Cause there are other questions that I actually have that I wanna make sure are clarified. This from a legal standpoint, Doug, was not, is not a sole source. And there was a competitive process. However, it wasn't from the primes contractor standpoint. But our subs have been competitively vetted and our, our lighting company has been, has been competitively bid. Okay, so I guess we're splitting hairs here, but I understand that a little bit better now. Anne, I wanna have you, I wanna have you get a couple of things on the record for me. Particularly about our workforce. From, it's very important to me that any, any project that we, that we do, the workforce is, the workforce in our community is gonna be accessed and used.
Correct.
Talk to me a little bit about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So what we're gonna do is whichever the contractor, so the project will be competitively bid. The contractors will, you know, submit their bids. Whichever contractor is selected by the city, you know, PG&E will make the recommendation, but city staff has the ultimate say. In that part of the package, it will clearly state that all additional workers that need to be on this project have to come from local 100 IBEW. So that, and it's being written into the agreement that that is a requirement. Now, the contractors who will, you know, bid on the project, you know, they have, you know, several installers that work within their firm, or you know, with, they're all IBEW, but they work as installers. All additional work and additional labor that needs to be brought onto this project will come out of the local 100.
Okay.
And that's in writing in the agreement.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanna move on to some of the, Alex talked about the savings timeline. And I don't know if Scott, maybe you're the right person to answer this. But there's an assertion being made that our savings from the financing and lighting start earlier if we were to use, for instance, Tango's proposal. They're representing that we have savings in year one as opposed to savings in year eight. Talk to me about that distinction, please.
Counsel, we feel that there's a real mixing of terms in that. Because with PG&E, the energy savings start in year one, much the same. As soon as the, as soon as the lighting is changed. As soon as the, as soon as the lighting is changed, that energy saving starts immediately. Um, we have to, uh, basically make a reduced energy savings payment with the bill, and we have a loan payment to make. So the energy savings, since, since we're talking apples-to-apples on lighting, we're going to be in the same wattage categories. We're doing this neighborhood-by-neighborhood design, but the energy savings is going to be the same. Um, now, when we talk then about, uh, financing cost, interest expenses, then we look at the rate between the two. So we have a zero percent rate, which has zero dollars in financing costs. Anything above that, like three percent, three point seven seven, that has much greater financing costs. So, um, when Tanco, I'm very familiar with the slide, uh, looked at their numbers, and, you know, a reference that saving starts in year one under private financing, but it doesn't start in year one under PG, that's, that's simply not correct, that's a misrepresentation of, of the financials.
Jane, you want to weigh in? I know you're, you're also.
No, Scott is absolutely correct. As soon as those fixtures are, are, are changed out, the energy savings begin. And so there is no waiting for energy savings, uh, until year eight or year seven or whatever. No, the energy savings start as soon as those fixtures are changed out.
But I mean, I, I, I think they're meaning the loan repayment, so.
The loan repayment begins when the project ends and that energy savings starts to be seen. And so as soon as that happens, then, then, and please cor- correct me if I'm wrong, Ann, uh, then, then that loan payment begins, and it doesn't begin before that because PG&E's fronting all the cost. Um, so, yeah, that's, 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 that's part of this p- project.
Okay. Alex wants to respond, and, and because, and, and obviously this is an odd hearing, but it's because of the way, come on down, Alex. And I'm sorry to keep having you go back and forth, Scott, but we got to get to the bottom of this and get it worked out.
It's, it's absolutely correct. The energy savings start year one, absolutely. When you put in the LED bulb, you're going to immediately consume less energy. But the costs related to those do not begin in year one from what we can see. The city staff report clearly stated that the city will continue to pay the same bill as it pays right now until twenty twenty-eight, or twenty twenty-six, excuse me, and then after that, the cost savings reduce. So yes, the energy savings are very real day one, but the cost to the city remain the same for the next several years, while you pay off the, the initial up-fronting of all of the material and installation from PG&E.
Jane, can, Jane, can you, can, uh, I don't know if you heard that.
Yes, I did, and, and the.
Does our bill, does our, so do we pay the same payment?
I would defer to Ann.
Okay.
To, to a- address that question.
So your, your bill will stay the same because the energy that you're saving obviously saves you money. So the money that is saved goes to use, to pay back the zero percent loan. When that money becomes available to the city is when the loan is paid off. And again, a zero percent interest loan obviously is going to be paid off quicker than if you were paying three, three and a half percent. So when you're all done paying, all of that savings now goes to the city.
Okay.
And there are costs involved, um, prior to the energy savings coming onto line, because there's the construction cost, the procurement of the fixtures and all that. It, it's a ten and a half million dollar project potentially, that we will front the costs, we will cover all of that for you so you do not have to take out a construction loan, because you owe us nothing until the savings start coming in.
So the, and, and the ten and a half million dollars does, we talked a little bit about earlier, does include a contingency?
Oh, yeah.
And is the contingency ten percent?
I believe ours is around that. The temper, yes, standard.
Okay, so the contingent, so the actual construction cost of the project is somewhere around, what, nine, nine and a half million?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The lights, Scott, how many lights, in fact, are we installing? There seems to be some debate, and I can't even, I hear the number thirty-five thousand four hundred and twelve. How many lights are actually being installed?
That, that is approximately thirty-five thousand four hundred.
Does that include the decorative lights?
That does not. That's another twenty-eight hundred lights, um, on, that, out of our total forty-three thousand. So we have thirty-five thousand with the Cobra heads that'd be converted. Uh, we have twenty-eight hundred decorative we do in a parallel, separate project. And then the balance of out of our forty-three thousand, the balance are either already LED, or we have other, uh, grant-funded projects in the pipeline that are going to result in them being LED. So when that, when this is done, we'll have citywide everything done except for the twenty-eight hundred decorative that we're going to tackle in parallel.
Okay. And the prorated warranty, so the warranty's a ten-year prorated warranty or not a prorated warranty? For the Cree, the Cree fixture?
Not, not prorated, and the gentleman from Cree can, uh, speak, speak to that if desired.
Well, if the answer is no, I mean, that was my question, so if it's, it's, it's not a prorated warranty. And help me understand, what is the, so now I'm getting a little technical because somebody's giving me some insight on the CRI, so I have some terms that make me sound pretty dangerous up here. So somebody's going to have to he- he- help me, help me understand the different CRIs with the Cree light that we are recommending, that you, that's being recommended to us versus what's available in the marketplace. And the CRI, I understand, is a, yeah, if he's here, I'm, I'm happy to.
Absolutely. Have a representative available. All right, would be just one moment with the appropriate representative coming in. All right, he just stepped out.
I know, I, and I see a lot of hands going up in the audience, I'm, I'm, I'll let, I'll let a couple of you guys come up and speak, but I'm going to get, get through my questions here before I, okay. So what is the CRI of the light that's being recommended to us?
Uh, the, the CRI is seventy, which is, um, which is pretty industry standard.
Okay. Are you aware of a light that has a, a higher CRI?
Yeah, we're, we're one of the few manufacturers who offer an eighty CRI streetlight.
Okay, what's the importance of the CRI?
Trying to make this, uh, as less technical as I can and still just kind of, uh, bring it home for you. So a hundred being true daylight at noon, the ability for colors to be seen in their truest form. Uh, so at, at, at noon, um, under true daylight, this is actual red, this is actual green. It's not the color of the light itself, but the, but the appearance of colors under that light.
Okay. And you have one that, and that's a relatively important thing, I'm assuming?
To be frank, in street lighting, it hasn't been a real issue. Um, when you get into applications, you know, um, a variety of applications, interior at your grocery store, they want the produce to look, uh, true to color, um, car lots, they want their, you know, their cars to pop at night with the truest colors. Street lighting, uh, we kind of pushed the envelope of, of technology and kind of offered it. Uh, to be frank, it's, it hasn't been on high demand, so we offer a seventy, which is industry standard, and we offer an eighty.
Okay, well.
It's on a hundred scale.
I'll ju- I'll just say, w- why aren't we getting the, the one that has eighty CRI?
It's absolutely there for you to have, for sure.
But why didn't you, why, why wasn't that one recommended, I guess, is what I'm asking? Do you know why, or did you guys offer that?
I, I hate to keep deferring to PG&E, but that, you know, that's.
That was their call?
Yeah.
Okay, is it a more, is it a more expensive light?
It is not. I think you're, you're, you're going to take a slight penalty, I'll say, you know, four or five percent on efficacy or, or, uh, energy efficiency. So that would be one reason.
Okay, so the higher the CRI, the less efficient?
Yeah, and, and by and large, um, you know, most cities and utilities are not willing to compromise the energy efficiency for, you know, a little bit better color rendering, for street lighting specifically.
Sure. Okay, well, I, you know, and I only mention that because I, I do, did talk to, uh, I used to be a police officer, and I did talk to a little bit about this with law enforcement, and it is, while it may not be as important to us, it is important to them. Uh, so, okay, thank you, thank you for, uh, answering those questions.
Sure.
Well, tho- those are the, most of the questions that I, most of the cl- questions and clarification that I, that I was, that I had. And I'll tell you that, um, uh, by and large, there's, there's some discomfort, and I've shared that with everyone that, that listened to me about just how this whole thing was explained and, and, and rolled out, and I think it, it could have been done better. I know that, um, the way that this is coming across as a sole source, I get, I understand why exactly why Tanco would feel that way and make those assertions. I do, though, feel, feel that we, that there was a competitive process, so I am comfortable with that, that it, that it was not, uh, you know, it was internal, we have an internal competitive process too, though, so I, 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 I do get that. I mean, whoever's process it was going to be, would have been internal. My good friend, Councilmember Brettafeld, is laughing at me, but, you know, I, I, I do feel like there was a competitive process. I am wanting to find a way to support this, but with some caveats. Uh, and definitely surrounding around, uh, our ability to, to, uh, vet out, uh, the, the lighting company a little bit more. Uh, I think that there are some opportunities there that I want us to explore, and I think I've shared that with Scott. I know Scott directly, I think I've shared that with you, Ann, and I know I've shared that with the administration, that, uh, and no, no offense to Cree whatsoever, um, but I do want to look at some other lighting opportunities. I also am glad that you cleared up the workforce question for me. So, you, you know, tho- those, those were important. So I'm going to think about this for a little bit more, and I may offer, uh, if, if, hopefully I may offer an amendment, but I just wanted to highlight what the, what the, what the, my thoughts were, uh, around this.
Councilmember Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I want to try and get through this as quick as I possibly can. I want to begin by thanking, uh, our good friends and, uh, partners from PG&E, um, for putting this together. Um, you know, there's, there's no question that, uh, we can always count on receiving quality from PG&E, uh, very responsible in our community, uh, and, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for bringing this forward to the city. Uh, I just had a, a quick question, I don't, I don't really care who answers it. I'm, I'm also trying to wrap my head around the, the entire, um, uh, process. So I guess the first question I have, um, maybe city attorney. Okay, so, help me to understand this, so if I, if, let's say that you're doing a, um, we need to pave some streets in the city of Fresno, and Clint's paving company, um, Clint's paving company comes to the city and says, I have, uh, I have a, a, a special arrangement that you qualify for, and I have a zero percent, uh, in, a zero percent interest rate, um, and I've done all the bidding. Can the council award that contract to Clint's Widgets? Or Clint's auto paving, or road paving, or whatever, can, can?
U- under that scenario, no. The difference is here, state law specifically sets up a pro- a different process for this.
Okay, so if, if it was, let's say it was, it was Clint Gas and Electric, and Clint Gas and Electric wanted to, to, to participate in this program, and I said, hey, city, I have a zero percent interest rate for you, uh, if you, if you want to do this, and I've already done all the bidding, it's, it's turnkey, ready to go. Then can, can this council award to, to me?
If there was potentially a similar state law that would apply to that, then yes.
Okay, the, and the state law that applies to this, again, is?
That allows the, uh.
Public utilities to do it?
Yes.
Because the public utility can do it, but private business cannot?
That, that is not accurate.
Okay.
Uh, under the, under that statute, um, it, this is couched as a public-private partnership, so in, in theory, um, for energy conservation projects, so then any, any private industry then could enter into that, an agreement with the city using that statute for energy conservation. This typically comes up with solar projects, for example, like that's probably the best example of, of how this would typically work out.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I understand the, what, what the city is trying to do here. I understand that PG&E is, is trying to offer a valuable service and a great opportunity for the city of Fresno to become involved in, and I, I appreciate that very much. But I'm, I'll be casting a friendly no today, uh, wish you luck with this project. I, I predict it'll be, it will pass council, uh, and you'll be awarded the, this piece of business. But I, I'm, I'm, I'm still, um, I'm clear, I think I understand it. I think that that pretty much summed it up for me where I'm at. From time to time, over the course of, of the eight years that I've been here, I, I have seen this city council go sideways, and I have seen council members become, uh, unglued from their chairs, uh, over, over, hey, the administration has found this one company, and it's a deal we just can't pass up, and they come to the council and they ask the council, hey, we've got one company and they're special, and they, they have to do it because it's going to save us money because they're special. And I have seen the council go sideways on, on that with the Swearengen administration in the past, uh, in, in the years passed since I've been here. So, um, the council's not going sideways today, uh, and so I think that you're probably going to see a, a, a successful, um, uh, vote for you. But in, in the future, I, I like to see, um, I like to see, um, bidding. I like to see the city go out and, and publicly bid these things and give other contractors an opportunity to do it too. And that's not to diminish the, the great role that, that PG&E plays in our community. Uh, it's not to diminish the, uh, the opportunity that the city has. Uh, I just think, uh, out of fairness, I think that, uh, that, that projects of this magnitude should, should probably go out for bid. Um, and I, I think that someone in the state legislature should, should probably address that loophole that, that allows cities to, to award major pieces of business, uh, without, um, going out to competitive bidding. So if there's a Democrat in the state assembly that wants to take that one on, um, thank you very much.
Want to give up local control? Wow. Councilmember Baines.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to my very dear friend, Councilmember Capriolio. I, I, I think that I could, um, th- there are some benefits overall that I think I could probably see why we could, why we could go through this approach, even though the process was less than ideal. But I, I'd like to, I'd like to, uh, add that, and I've talked to the administration in some detail about this, and I think that they would be supportive, but I'd like to, um, ask that the final contract's not ratified until the city of Fresno's had a chance to sign off on the lighting company.
I'm not sure I understand the, the, the depth of that comment or, or friendly amendment. Like, my, honestly, my main concern is I've seen how PG&E operates in, uh, the Eldorado neighborhood, at Fresno State, and how effective and efficient and quick they are. And I, I've been concerned about that because it's made such a difference. So the quicker, faster we can get this implemented, the bigger, better, safer city we'll have. More efficiency will come from that, more revenue will come from that, it, it, it's, uh, there's a lot of pluses. And I, I don't want to delay the process, and if that delays the process, I'm, I'm not so sure I could support that.
I don't know if it does or not, but, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to support it unless we have the final sign off on it. So if you can't accept that friendly amendment, then I won't be supporting this.
Is there, uh, anything that, uh, Scott, can you give us any insight on that? Or is there, I, I'm not, I'm not real sure I understand the totality of the request.
Uh, Councilmember, to be clear, are you asking to come back to council for approval, or maybe the city manager?
No, to come back to council for approval.
Can't we just put it on for next week, or how long does it take?
I, I think the Council President is asking what's the timeline or something like that.
Yeah, what's the timeline? What would be the timeline of doing that?
And I think, uh, uh, staff would just like to get some clarification on the motion. Would that be, is that a request to come back, uh, just for which companies involved or which fixture? Because there will be, there will be multiple fixtures, um, on the project. Again, it's a neighborhood-by-neighborhood design, um, as we talked in the workshop. Um, intersections have one type, mid-block have another kind, knuckles, cul-de-sacs, there's a lot of variation. And some of that will not be known until you get into the neighborhood-by-neighborhood design. Or, or is it rather the council that would want to see, just make a choice on lighting company? Just to clarify.
Uh, I'm not sure if Member Baines can answer that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, did he ask a question?
He was showing the diversity of the lighting situation, and, uh, that it's, it's not complicated, but there's a lot to it, and it needs to.
No, it is actually really complicated, but, and there, and there's a lot to it, but.
Exactly, and, uh, did, did someone raise their hand back there, or are they just stretching? Oh, okay, sorry. Alex got me into the head-raising process here.
So, do we have the request? So, do we have the request clear enough? How long will that be? Or will it add to the timeline?
Councilmember Baines, if I may. Are, are you asking to basically have council approval over which company provides the lighting fixtures?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
What's, what's the process?
You know, as we're trying to figure out, what does this mean for the timeline? Because, I mean, it will cause delays, but that's not necessarily, you know, a bad thing, depending on how long that delay is. Here's the issue is, one of the things that I've heard many of the council members grasp to is the reason their comfort level is, is up is because of the competitive process that we went through to select the light manufacturer and the competitive process we're about to go through for the contractor. If we dismiss the manufacturer that was selected during our competitive procurement process, and we go start looking at other manufacturers now that were not selected or part of our process, a, a big red flag is going up for me that that component of our competitive process that is being, you know, heralded right now as a good thing, because it was competitively bid for the vendor, it makes me a bit nervous, to be honest with you, to set that aside and say, "We might pick this vendor, that vendor, despite the fact they were not a part of the, the process." So that gives me a little bit of concern. What we need to figure out is moving forward with the master services agreement, which is what we're trying to do. And we're trying to have, you know, Wilmay have the authority to sign the master services agreement. Once that is done, then the rest of the process goes, which is going neighborhood-by-neighborhood to determine, you know, light fixtures and, and what exactly the project looks like. So tha- that's the only thing, is that I see this becoming, you know, even more complicated, delayed the project, you know, coming to potentially a halt. Because, again, if you're going to throw out the competitive process, which we're, like I said, we've been saying that as part of the reason we're comfortable, is there was a competitive process for fixture selection, a manufacturer. So if you set that aside and, and start some other consideration and process, I, I'm just not, you know, sure that that is what the goal is. And, and yeah, it would cause delay and, and impact the project significantly in costs and timeline and whatnot. So I, I'm just trying to get clear on, on what exactly an amendment to the, to the motion would really create.
Yeah, I think, I think I've been pretty clear about what it is. I don't, I don't, I mean, and I, I appreciate your perspective, but that's my amendment. And Cap, you can either take it or not. But it, I'm not saying that we start up, start the whole thing all over, but that's my amendment.
So just for clarification, so I know, because I know our folks are gonna ask. So if that amendment were accepted, does that mean that staff would come forward with their recommendation of a manufacturer so that you can bless it?
Well, we have to bless it anyway. I mean, whatever, whatever contractor you use, or whatever manufacturer you use, it all has to be, you know, quote-unquote blessed by, by the city. So, yeah, I mean, tha- that's what I would say. I mean, we have some ideas. I think that there are some opportunities that we don't want to pass us by. We wanna figure out how best to incorporate some other manufacturers, if that opportunity's available, and I wanna keep the door open. And if we close the door right now, then to me, we're missing out. So, and I've, and you, you and I, you and I have talked a little bit about it, you know, offline, and so, and I've talked to the administration about it as well. So we can either figure out how to make it work or not, but, I mean, that's my amendment.
That's probably what they're trying to do right now.
Councilmember Brettafeld.
I appreciate the concern, Paul, that you raised about, let's get this done. Let's do the public sa- public safety, you know, make it, the lights better. Clearly, I mean, I support that, absolutely respect that. I, I'm troubled by the fact that this didn't go out for an RFP. And, you know, it's being said that this was competitively bid, that the primary contractor was not competitively bid. PG&E was given the sole source to do this, and then they, they're doing their own competitive bidding, and that's what's happening here. And normally, we do a competitive bid with any kind of major project. And, you know, we have a representative, Tanco, here. You know, that's just one of many that do this kind of work throughout the nation that would have competitively bid, perhaps would have given the, the cost savings, significant cost savings to our taxpayers. And ultimately, that's what we're here for. We're supposed to be overseeing to make sure money is allocated as wisely as possible, used as expeditiously as possible, and that it goes to what it should, that we're trying to accomplish, which is, you know, public safety and getting the lights changed quickly. But we need to do it at the best dollar that we can. We don't know that this is the best deal, because it wasn't put out for an RFP. Tanco offers a number of interesting things, where they say there's cost savings upfront. City staff has said, "Well, it's not really 2 million. It's probably closer to 800,000, which would be a saving." Well, that's $800,000 of the savings. We will never know unless we put this out to bid and see what comes back. As far as, as far as, you know, local hires, I asked the city attorney. Whatever company would bid, we can ask, mandate, make it as part of the deal that we, they hire local. So this, there's nothing new to PG&E hiring local. We, we've done that before. We will do it again. So for me, I think in the interest of transparency, in the interest of truly representing our citizens, when we say we're going to watch their dollars and spend them wisely, this adoption of, of this motion doesn't do that. It basically gives it to PGA, which has, you know, worked with us before, do good work, no problem with PG&E, have a problem with the process. So can, can I make a substitute motion that we put this out for RFP? Or we have to vote on the first motion first?
If you wanna make another main motion, you would have to wait for the first motion to be defeated, or you can make a motion to amend that motion with something else. Those are the two options at this point.
Okay, can I make a motion to amend that we put this out for RFP? And then, and we can ask our city staff to expedite this. I don't know how long, how quickly it could be done. Yeah, what were you saying? Quickly.
Just that countless agencies in California have released RFPs of this nature. A blueprint has already been set forth for the city. Cities of Santa Clarita, Modesto, Chino Hills, Ranch Cucamonga, it's all been done before. So an RFP can be essentially copy and pasted, replace the name and the inventory with that of Fresno's, and RFP can be out in a few weeks.
Okay.
Well, for clarification, I think this would be full competitive bid, right, Scott? Yes. This is a public work of improvement.
Yes.
So the motion could be motion to amend the main motion by saying, "First, go out and competitively bid it, and then come back with that?"
Yes. That's the motion.
So is that a second motion, or your motion to amend? I thought I heard motion...
To amend, to amend.
To amend the original motion?
Yes.
But doesn't the maker of the motion have to accept the amendment?
No, there's two ways to offer an amendment. One is the friendly amendment, and the other is to make a motion that has to get a second, and we be voted on first before then voting on the first main motion.
So now we will vote on his motion prior to voting on...
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay. Councilmember Brandow.
Councilman Brettafeld's comments kinda cleared that up. But so, if the concern is, because early on, I mean, like, three hours ago, I asked Scott, we'll have more flexibility in the lights, the type of lights that go into the neighborhoods. That's correct. That's what you told me, right, Scott? So we're not super limited to, there's not just one light that's gonna be universally put out throughout the city of Fresno. Our staff's gonna take into consideration the inventory that PG&E is already doing out in our community, and there will be circumstances where it calls for a specialty light or a different light. Is that what you're talking about? That our ability to kind of create?
Yeah, I, I think, yes. I, I think that we should be, what we don't do well here in the city of Fresno is we don't look at big-picture stuff. We just, for expediency, for ease of process, a lot of times, we just do it quick and easy. But I think there are opportunities that are in the city of Fresno right now to work with lighting companies that wanted, that are here, and they're local. And we should, we should not, we should not be less than concerned with that. And that's why I wanna keep the process open, so we have an opportunity to do that. Everyone on this dais knows me well enough to know that. I care about Fresno and our community first. And so if there's a local lighting company that is trying to manufacture here, that's trying to grow their company here, I want them to have an opportunity to participate. I don't say all the lights have to be theirs or what have you, but we certainly should not close the door to that opportunity. And that was the purpose of the amendment. But it was rejected, so we'll go from there.
Okay, so I, it wasn't, it's not really, it's about the manufacturer of the lights, not the type of lights. So we've got some flexibility on the types of...
They'll all be LEDs, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, then. I'm just gonna say that I've listened to both sides for three council meetings now. And, including the workshop prior to this, to, to hearing this. And I, in my, by nature, I prefer to go out to RFP. In this instance, I haven't seen that that's gonna produce a better result, okay? So that's, I've listened to both sides. I think both sides make great arguments. I think both sides of my colleagues make great arguments as well. And I think both sides in the audience make great arguments. I haven't seen that going out, this might be a special, a specialty application that we are getting offered by PG&E. And, you know, in all reality, if we're looking at my political philosophy, I would prefer to go with a private company over PG&E six days a week. But I think in this instance, PG&E offers, in this case, PG&E, PG&E is offering us a very solid opportunity for the city of Fresno. Now, Councilman Baines, I get your motion now. You're talking about more about the who is going to manufacture the lights. And I, you know, I just don't think we can stall, I just don't think it's worth stalling this project anymore. And I would be open to anything if, if I felt like the pathway was there for a better product, a better end product. I just, I haven't seen it. I've heard all the arguments. Personally, I haven't seen it. So I believe I'm gonna be supporting this, this, this staff recommendation today. Thank you.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Just to summarize my thoughts on the, on the issue. I, I agree with my colleagues and Councilmember Baines in particular. There is no quick and easy solution to what we're trying to achieve here. But I've been working on this for four and a half, five years to get LED lighting in our community, and especially in my area that I've talked about, El Dorado neighborhoods. And so it is not quick and easy, but I've been doing this for so long and following this and trailing and tracking and so forth, that it's time now to make a decision. We've had a lot of great discussion. We've kind of, I think, I don't think we've ever had a discussion as thorough as this on any particular issue in my tenure here at City Hall. But again, the pilot program worked. I saw how it functions. We worked hard. We got it going. It's fantastic, as I said earlier. I trust our Public Works Department. I've had meeting, meetings with them, and we've discussed this in detail along with the administration. So I think it's been, it's been vetted extremely well, and on a, on a cost-savings basis with, we always talk about taxpayer dollars and ratepayer dollars, which is significant and important. But if it was zero financing, fronting the cost by PG&E, all the things we reviewed on that financing issue, it, it all makes sense to me. So I'm prepared to move forward and, and vote in support of my motion, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Capriolio. I forgot to go to, out to the public because of kind of how we transition onto the item. So before I make my comments, the final comments, I will, I do have two yellow cards. I don't know if these individuals already spoke. Don Perry, Perry Khan? And Alex Hazel? Oh, okay. Perfect. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to make a comment at this moment?
Hello. I'm David Taylor, owner of Advanced Lighting Services. I'm one of several IBEW contractors that bid and work on Pacific Gas and Electric projects. They do have a competitive bid process, but not only based on price, but more importantly, based on performance, financials, and safety. The task that we do, changing the light fixture, is an electrical task. We do that well. But the primary task is that, because we're out on the streets with pedestrians, traffic, kids, everything, safety's number one. We have specialized trucks built for street lighting. Our guys are trained with DOT certifications. We've done several thousands of these fixtures, but I am not the only contractor that PG&E has employed. It has been successful. The type of light fixture that we install has gotten better every year, and so you are getting a good quality. And like I say, the safety is probably the most important thing. We have completed Bakersfield and many other projects. We are actually working San Francisco streetlights as we talk. I think the concern in the bidding process, and I've been in this business for 40 years. I've owned Advanced Lighting for 26. I've been to the city bids. It is very difficult. The toughest thing is to qualify the contractor, not just based on low price. And I think I heard that mentioned here before, that you get contractors, some good, some not, but there are issues. With me working with PG&E directly, I have no change orders. It's a flat fee, there's no increase. Wow.
You have 58 seconds.
I think the, like I say, the, the primary goal here is to be safe. You've got 35,000 streetlights, you've got busy streets, you've got neighborhoods, you have schools. All of this is taken into consideration. Our guys have done thousands of them. We are IBEW, and with help from a local 100 here, we'll probably find some new long-term employees. I do have employees that live here in, in Fresno area. And as far as a warranty issue, it's quick. We handle the manufacturer's warranty, and we do it through PG&E handling the Cree fixture. If there is an issue, I've installed thousands, and the defective rate is very, very low. Pretty much it. This is what I do. This is what I've done for years.
Member Brandow, and, and I have, we don't have that skill level. We basically do the bulb and the sensor. But when we, when we're up in the truck, we're all, we're belted in, and we have our helmets and, and so forth and so on. So I really appreciate what you said, and you're right, because when you're in that bucket at an intersection, and Steve can verify, would trucks go by?
Trucks, buses.
You're doing a little prayer to Jesus.
And we're aware of that. And we work either day or night, depending on what the condition is. We don't work around schools during the, the heavy traffic times. We look at all that, and we, like I say, it's, it's a big concern.
We appreciate your, that aspect of this and your comments today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, I have Jeffrey Gillis and John Sofrenic.
Yeah, good afternoon. Jeff Gillis, my role at Cree Lighting is I get the pleasure of being responsible for the street lighting business in the U.S. A little background on Cree, because I haven't been here to, to represent our company in front of you all yet, so this might be your first time getting just kind of a quick profile of who Cree is. If you've heard the name Cree, it might be at Home Depot. You might have seen our screw-in light bulbs there. To say that Cree is a leader in LED street lighting is an understatement. Cree, in fact, was the pioneer of LED street lighting. And you only have to go back about 10 years ago. So it's been a pretty short ride so far, although it seems a long time. But it wasn't but 10 years ago, a lot of the world was saying, "There's no way that you can put the, you know, essentially the equivalence of a, of a flat-screen TV up on a streetlight pole and expect it to survive and have the right light, light output and, and such." So for, for companies like Cree, we, we made that a reality, and that's kind of how we're here today. today. A $1.5 billion company, we're on the NASDAQ, ticker symbol C R E E if you want to look us up. So I think the biggest thing that you might hear from John and PG&E is, when you're an early adopter and you're a pioneer like that, not unlike Apple creating that first iPhone, they had to make sure that, that thing was very robust, very durable, and it didn't break as soon as you dropped it. So Cree likewise knew that if this technology was gonna work, it had to be reliable and it had to be durable and all that. So we think we've proven that, there's little doubt. I haven't really heard any doubts in the room about the technology itself, right? So chalk one up for, for the LED industry. But another thing I think is notable is Cree as a disruptor in the industry, was the first to offer a full 10-year warranty. I call it the bumper-to-bumper warranty. We did that in 2012, much to the dismay of our competitors, most of whom still do not offer a full 10-year warranty. They will negotiate it or offer it offline, but it's not standard. So we offer that standard, and we've been doing so since 2012. If you don't have any questions about the company, I would like to close with something I think is pretty, pretty notable, given the last 15 minutes discussion. And being a taxpayer, I appreciate being a good steward of the public's money for sure. There's a heck of a lot more that goes into something like this and the cost of the product. Certainly, I bear the battle scars of PG&E's competitive bid process multiple, multiple times over the years. But I think PG&E knows Cree as a very reliable company. And when PG&E says jump, I can tell you, Cree asks how high, because when we've been on the products, it's, we're not just bidding on the 35,000 or 40,000 streetlights at Fresno, we're bidding on hundreds of thousands of streetlights on PG&E's system. So if there's no questions, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is very interesting for me. As Ann said, I've been with the company for 46 years. I gave birth to the LED program and...
Can you repeat your name, sir?
My name's John Sofrenic, sorry. And, and we were early adopters. We started this program in 2009. And I was working in a particular department that was working for cities like yourself to convert streetlights. And PGD was not, at that particular point in time, interested in changing any of their streetlights as well. I've since moved from actually doing that work into electric operations where I have full control over the fixture selection as well as the contractors itself. And I will tell you, it's rigorous. And safety is, is a, is a big deal at PG&E. And, and one of the things that, we, we do background checks. We make sure that there's no safety violations. And making sure that a particular company hasn't been sued, or a particular company hasn't had any other, other issues or lawsuits against them. And if they do, they don't work for PGD. And I would caution you as you move forward, however you choose to move forward, you need to take a look at all those things as well. We've already vetted that. As far as the fixture manufacturer, I was the one that was in charge of the RFP. And I've got, you wouldn't believe the fixtures that came in for us to actually take a look at. And Cree was the one that was actually selected through a very competitive bid and rigorous process. And, and we continue to use them. We've also changed out over 250,000 lights, not nationwide, here in our backyard. So we've worked with many, many other cities within our service territory, not across the nation, right here in your backyard. South of you, north of you, west of you. So I think from, from, from that particular standpoint and how we've done that, I think the, the type of rigorous process that we go through to actually get this done is, is probably better. And in terms of a process that I've, that I've actually seen and witnessed over the years I've actually worked for PG&E. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to comment on this time? Will?
Good afternoon, Board President Soria, members of the Fresno City Council. Sorry, other hat, my apologies. It slipped. My name's Will Oliver. I serve as the Director of Business Services for the Fresno County Economic Development Corporation. We certainly appreciated the, the discussion this afternoon and, and appreciate the cities as well as PG&E's commitment to our local businesses. We just wanted to state for the record that we would like to see, wherever possible, a win-win situation and looking at ways to work with our local suppliers and manufacturers. At the Fresno County EDC, we work in, with both existing companies and small businesses and contractors, as well as prospective companies looking to locate to the area. We've had experience working in this field and being successful and recruiting companies such as LED manufacturing to look at Fresno over competing cities like Dallas, Texas. So in terms of that supplier network, the manufacturing, assembly opportunities that local suppliers may bring and the jobs that are associated with that, we would like to, to ask for, for any consideration there and looking for that win-win opportunity to partner with PG&E and the city of Fresno. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Baines?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify. Apparently, I didn't do a good job of clarifying what my intent was. I simply, and Will, I thank you, Will, for coming down and making that point. I simply want us to have the opportunity to work with local suppliers. That's it. Wasn't as, and I'm sorry if I confused the issue, but I don't wanna say that we don't use Cree at all, that's not what I said. But I do want the flexibility for us to be able to work with some local suppliers. That's it. And I don't think it's unreasonable at all. The gentleman from PG&E, just, you've been working there for 46, 46 years, and you said this is your, you know, California's your backyard, and I'm with you there. I want us to work with manufacturers in our backyard, because these are our taxpayer dollars. And we should be, we should be cognizant and conscious of that and do things that further and advance the agenda of this city as well. And too many times, meeting after meeting, project after project, there's little to no concern given to our folks here in Fresno, simply having the opportunity to work on the projects. We're gonna spend, you know, millions of dollars in lights, and simply to ask that we have the opportunity to look at a local supplier somehow is unreasonable. So if I didn't explain that, you know, carefully enough, my, my apologies. Wasn't trying to throw Cree Lighting Company out, didn't say any, any of that. But I think there are opportunities to partner. As a matter of fact, I know that there are. And, you know, these, these are our dollars, this is our community, this is our city, and this, this body should be concerned with that. And I'm kinda tired of being, I'm kinda irritated right now, because I feel like I'm the last per, I'm the, I'm the guy that always says this and no one cares. We should care about our community, we should care about who we put to work here, you know, which is why I may wanted to clarify where our workforce was coming from. I care the same thing about our suppliers. And you know what? I'm not that interested that it may take another month or two or what have you to get it right. It's not the most important thing. It's a bigger picture that we're doing here, and we ought to use our dollars efficiently and effectively, and we ought to be mindful and conscious of what we're trying to accomplish here. Hell, I don't know what we're trying to do. We won't, we won't give, we won't give our local folks a chance on, on our, our lights and our project? Doesn't make any sense to me.
Can I, City President?
Can we call for the question, Council President?
Well, I just wanted to make sure of the, it's clear on the amendment to your motion. City Attorney, can you just clarify?
Yes, I just wanna make sure we're, we're clear. My understanding is your motion is to amend the main motion by saying instead, we will put the PG&E deal on hold, go do a full competitive process, bring that back, compare that to PG&E, and then make a choice at that time. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, well, I haven't finished, or I haven't even started making my points and asking a couple of the questions that I had. So I appreciate everyone you guys have had the opportunity to ask, to share multiple times your comments and questions. So I had a couple of questions. One, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Baines clarifying his request. I don't think it is unreasonable at all. And so just wondering, is there any flexibility that we can afford to be able to move this forward? Can, can we at all? Is there anyone here that can answer that question? We're not saying 100%, we're not saying 50%. We're just saying... So can anyone ask, answer that question? Go ahead. Mayor?
Good afternoon. It's been a long discussion. I wanna say I agree with Councilman Baines in terms of using local people. There's an opportunity here, as long as it can be done in a way that doesn't unduly delay this already painful process. I'll let Scott speak to the specifics, but I, conceptually, I am okay with Councilman Baines' request.
Counsel, there may be opportunity, again, recognizing the timeline, the opportunity to get benefits and lights throughout the city. An opportunity could be to, to utilize other lighting manufacturer perhaps for some percentage of the project. And especially, I think, ability to get those lights approved and set, set to go would be pretty critical. Again, we are, we are talking 35,000 citywide, a concern for PG&E and all the contractors involved, of course, his ability to deliver and have that supply and cost effective for that. But I think we could absolutely look into opportunities of utilizing, maximizing some local, local lighting. Again, provided, you know, they can meet specifications. I think, I'm very, very hopeful, confident they could get there. So that, that could be an opportunity. That'd be a, a policy call.
So is that something that you guys can commit to do, or do you want this body to include it as part of the motion? Can we get a commitment from folks that we'll, we will have that flexibility and try?
From the Public Works Department's standpoint, staff's perspective, we feel that's doable. Just looking briefly for PG&E concurrence.
We can confer with staff on the, their final selection of the manufacturer, without a doubt, as long as what we're saying is, we will continue to review and make a final decision. Is, is that what we're saying? Give additional consideration? Because I'm not completely clear on the end, you know, at the end of the day. Is the decision that staff comes back with, as long as they go and give reconsideration and further deliberation on manufacturer? So is, is that what the request is? Further consideration?
Yeah, I wanna make sure that we have the opportunity to use potentially a local manufacturer here on this project. So however that needs to be framed in the world of staff, I'm not, you know, but that's what my intention is. It's not, it's not to not use Cree or what have you, but it definitely is to also use some of our, use our local folks. So, and I want that, and I want that in, in, in the motion. I don't want, I don't just, you know, I just don't want staff's word for it. I want that to be part of the motion. This body should be making that motion anyway. It shouldn't even be controversial, really.
And it's not asking 100%, it's just making sure that we have the flexibility to utilize, I don't, to utilize local manufacturers.
Is, did we discuss local preference for hours?
There's a difference. There's a different component.
Yeah, city staff could definitely give consideration to local manufacturers as part of the process of their final selection. I mean, if, if that's what the ask is, and that's what you're willing to do, correct? Yeah, so they will make that as part of the process, moving forward on the, the final determination.
Okay, so how many motions can we have out there? Am I allowed to make a...
We can do a few more.
Competing motion?
We can have one main motion and one motion to amend pending at a time, unless you want to allow also for serial competing motions to amend.
Okay, well, I'll wait to make, make the motion. I just had one, one other question to, to ask, because I've appreciated the conversation about local workforce and, and jobs here in our community. And I appreciate the commitment to bring IBW 100 as part of this project. One of the questions that I had, and I don't know if this is for the IBW representative or for PG&E, but I know that it was part of a discussion that I had previously a couple days ago regarding apprentices. Would apprentices be part of, be part of, I guess, the IBW work? Is there someone?
Hi, my name's Dave Clark, I'm with IBW Local 100, I'm a business agent. Yes, any, any contractor that was signatory with us is required to take apprentices from us. And on top of that, some of the apprentices that we have came through the Building Trades Pre-Aprenticeship Program that came from disadvantaged means, and we put them through the free training of the pre-apprenticeship program that got opportunities into our apprenticeship program. So some of them that we actually took them from where they were on government assistance, and now they're in a, a career, a good career.
Perfect. So there would be a possibility, or that's, you guys would use that as part of the project? Great, okay, thank you. So can we take, those are all the questions that I had. I wanted to make a motion, but it seems like I can't. So we would have to dispose of the motion that's on the floor right now.
Yeah, the two options are, one, deal with the motion to amend and then the main motion, or you could get the maker of the main motion to modify his motion, if that's agreeable.
I don't think that that was agreeable, correct? You didn't, you didn't want to modify your motion to what Councilmember Bretafeld had offered, correct? Okay, so we'll go ahead and dispose of...
I'm punched up.
Oh, sorry, I just noticed.
I just had a quick question. We have all the lighting experts really in the, in the state, in the room right now. Does, does, no, I don't, I'm not being facetious, I'm serious. Are there any local firms that manufacture streetlights? Because I don't know of any. Does Alerta Light manufacture streetlights? No, right? All right, well, that kind of shoots that thing down, right?
No, it doesn't shoot it down.
Where are they gonna make them if they don't make them?
The administration is, is working along with the EDC to bring a local light manufacturer here.
Well, how long is that gonna take?
Can we just vote, please?
Yeah, we'll just vote with the motion on the floor, on your motion. City Attorney, can you...
We're gonna build a light factory? No, I'm not trying to...
Clarify. So the main motion is to approve the item. Councilmember Bretafeld's motion to amend that is to put the main item on hold, go do a full competitive process, then return with that, compare it against the PG&E deal, and make a decision then. So you vote on the motion to amend first.
On Gary's? Councilmember Bretafeld's motion.
I'd like to reoffer my amendment to Councilmember Capriolio, to allow the flexibility for us to have final authority on the lighting manufacturer.
Would we work through our department on that? They would prepare it all?
Yes, of course, of course, we work through our department.
Their recommendation would be considered as well. I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is an amended motion? So the first motion failed?
Right, the motion to amend failed, now we have a main motion that's been modified.
That's been modified.
And the main motion, as I understand it, is, before there's an award of a contract to a light supplier, the council will approve that contract, right? And PG&E would have to agree to that.
Well, of course, they, I mean, there are lights in our contracts, so yeah, I mean... Well, ultimately, if you all remember, ultimately, all of these decisions are ours.
Councilmember Brenda?
Yeah, so the city does have the final say, so.
So we can choose the lights, and you're going to be okay with that? You're not going to come back and squalor and all that? I'm serious.
Yeah, no, if, so if I understand the motion, is that you'll move forward with the PG&E turnkey program, so we're going to be entering into the master service agreement to do this project for you. What's going to come back for final approval is once the decision of the manufacturer is final, then that will come, the manufacturer or the-
Or manufacturers.
Right, will come back, you know, just for, to approve the fixture itself, not the program, not the 0%. I mean, as long as I know, yes, you're approving the 0% financing today, you're approving the city manager to enter into the master service agreement, that's good, with the caveat, we come back once for final fixture selection, then we come back for that, or the staff will come back for that. Is that what I'm hearing? Because that is fine.
Let me see if I've got it right.
That is fine.
So currently unnamed manufacturer that manufactures lights, we think.
Yet to be named.
Yet to be named. Okay, so, yeah, so say that they, so say that they manufacture a light, maybe it's on your list, maybe it's not, who knows? Who the hell knows? But we choose to use that light. You're saying, we'll do it, we'll put in that light.
Yeah, I think what, the one caveat I would throw in for Scott Mosher and for the city, is that the light meets current city standards. Meets or exceeds current city standards. I would just add that in to make sure everybody's safe, and that will help us increase our comfort level, that we're installing a light that meets or exceeds your city standards. So put that in there, and we're good.
I'll put that in.
Okay, perfect, so looks like the original motion now is amended. Are you still okay? Councilmember Chavez, you were the second? Great, okay. So, you know, I know that there's been a lot of discussion, I've said very little, because I think all of it has been said. I think what we have in front of us is an opportunity to see savings in the city, lots of money. We're going to see streets that are lighted a lot better. And what we've just, you know, seen also commitments from PG&E and the local, and the folks here, that we are going to put our local residents to work, and on top of that, add flexibility, so that if there are local manufacturers that produce lights that meet or exceed our standards, would be potentially included, which is a win-win for our community. I know tough questions were asked, I think great comments were made, and so I'll be supportive of that motion. We're ready to vote. Motion passes 5-2.
Motion to adjourn?
Now we have unscheduled communication. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak at this time? You can go ahead and come on down. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and make a motion to adjourn, and we're adjourning. We're adjourning in the memory of Marcus Lester. Meeting's adjourned, thank you.